We're going to call a special meeting of the village council to order at 6:30 PM and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Hostie?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Here.
Commissioner Mannix?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Mayor Calderon?
Here. So, we are officially convened and without objection, we're going to suspend the normal rules of our business meeting conduct, meaning tonight we're not going to take any motions, we're not going to officially take any action. We obviously are in a relaxed atmosphere. It's more or less like a workshop, kind of a committee of the whole, and especially for our two new elected officials. What we do is we're going to have a presentation from Tim first, kind of working or walk us through the entire budget worksheets. And then what we'll do when he's concluded with that, we'll go through each department, give all of the elected officials an opportunity to make any comments, recommendations, whatever may be on your mind, and then we'll talk about that as a group, and if necessary, make any adjustments. Any questions? So, with that, Tim, we'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, and again, for the benefit of the newly-elected officials and the public who will be seeing us through Comcast, I want to make sure that everybody understands that in the Village of Forest Park, we work off officially an appropriation. The budget is basically an internal document that we use as a village to help us keep a closer track of our revenues and expenditures. It is not technically an official document because we never adopt a budget, we only adopt an appropriation. Moving into this year, and first of all, let me apologize for the technology. We've been kind of fighting technology all day with some printing issues and computer issues and different things like that, but we're here now and we're ready to rock and roll. And what I want to do is start off with kind of a recap, to the best of our knowledge, of last fiscal year. And Sally, if you would. Fiscal year 2011, and I'm trying to figure out where the best place to stand is, it looks like maybe here. Fiscal year 2011, general fund revenues versus budget was actually down $711,400, or minus 4.2 percent. And again, so that you understand, at this time every year, and we'll do it tonight, Judy and I, we take our best guess at what the revenues are going to be. And I commented to Judy, and I've talked to Commissioner Hostie about it, I'd like to be at the school district where they really only have one source of revenue, and it's property taxes essentially, they have another little one that plays in. But in the village, we have five or six sources of revenue, and they're all kind of a floating target. It's sales tax, it's property taxes, it's all of the miscellaneous things which we'll discuss a little bit later. But, believe it or not, getting close, and $711,000 doesn't sound like close, but out of 22 million, it's not so far off, it's 4 percent. The biggest area of shortfall was our red light cameras. And so that all of you know, we have three red light cameras that are out of service right now, or is it two that are out of... Two of them are out of service right now in and around Roosevelt and Harlem. And they're out of service now because Oak Park and Berwyn are doing that large reconstruction project on Roosevelt Road, and because of that, our red light cameras can't operate because the lighting and all that stuff is all screwed up. So, that was a major source, 68 percent of the lost revenue. Additionally, $253,000 in property taxes. So, that was your shortfall. In the water fund, we were actually up $158,000, and that was plus 3.9 percent. Parking fund revenues versus budget was actually down $14,000, or 2.7 percent. Go ahead, Sal. But here's what we did. We understood all year long, in fiscal 2011, that the revenues weren't quite coming in where we expected. And after about the fourth or fifth month into a fiscal year, then Judy and I start watching the revenues very carefully. And it, I know it sounds that we should be watching them all along, but you can't really get a good feeling until you get a couple of months under your belt. And we could see that revenues were coming in slower than expected, and maybe not to the dollar limits that we expected. So, all of your department heads started working very hard, and you can see that in the various departments, public affairs, we cut $320,000, accounts and finance, $453,000, health and safety, 11, streets and public improvements, 68, and public property, $37,000. We actually increased our water fund expenditures by $120,000, and the parking fund by $233. In the water fund, the largest portion of that increase was due to several bad water mains. We had one project on Randolph, I think, John, that was almost $80,000. That was obviously unaccounted for. So, we had to go ahead and do that work. But overall, you can see that we were being very fiscally responsible in that we recognized less revenue, and we accounted for it by cutting expenses drastically. Before, and I'll talk about this slide in a minute, I want to tell you that when it's all said and done, and the books are audited, which will start in June or July, to be finished up probably in September, the village will show a revenue surplus in fiscal 2011, probably in the area of $400,000. And I know, again, it sounds funny when you're talking about numbers, to go probably, and I think, and kind of. And the reason for that is, again, mostly for the newly-elected officials, is we don't have all of our revenue from last year yet. We will be getting receipts from the state of Illinois as late as June, and maybe even some in July. Some of the expenditures that may have occurred in April haven't hit our books yet. So, it is a bit of a floating target, and even after everything is all in, once the auditors get a hold of it, they may say, hey, you know, that $10,000 that you brought in and you accounted for it here, it really need to be accounted for over there, or last fiscal year, or this fiscal year. So, the numbers do change a bit, but there is no doubt, there is no doubt, that the village will have come up with a surplus in fiscal 2011. This slide is just basically showing you that there is a reason for optimism. We do believe that things are starting to turn around, and when you look at these numbers, these were November through April of '10, these are November through April of '11, they've gone up. And I think beyond the fact that you can see the numbers, you get a vibe for it as well. You can see it happening on the street, that the economy is picking up, people are starting to spend money again, and overall, that represented a 5.1 percent increase. When we look at the utility and franchise taxes, you'll see that they went down a little bit. And so you know, electricity and gas are directly related to the price of oil. And when our gas prices are really high, that moves down into natural gas, which heats the homes. So, we will see that number increase fairly drastically this year, and you'll see when we move on to what we're projecting for this year, that it's gone up, and we're doing that because gas prices are high, that means natural gas prices are going to be higher, and electricity will also be higher. And our revenue from those utility taxes is based on what the consumer pays. So, we are going to anticipate an increase there. If you'll recall, during this last fiscal year, gasoline got all the way down into the $2 range again, you know, $2.25, $2.30, someplace in that, that makes our utility taxes come down. Go ahead, Jude. Here's some six-year trends. And again, you can see that, you know, in fiscal 2008, we spent a little bit more than we made. In '09, we were right about even. In '10, we showed a little bit of a surplus. In '11, we're going to project a surplus. And the budget I'm going to present to you tonight is going to show a very, very minor surplus, but it's there. Go ahead, Jude. And again, I want to let everybody know, if you have a question while I'm talking, don't hesitate to interrupt me. We're not standing...
Tim, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, can you go a couple slides back, please?
Sure, go ahead, Jude, back.
To the one where you had the estimated revenues?
Okay. In, well, you haven't seen one yet for fiscal 2012.
No, no. When you gave us the last couple of years.
The other way, please.
This year?
Go back one, please. Back another. Okay. Now, you gave us the last six months to show a 0.5, you know, 5 percent increase, just about. Do we have the number, if you use the whole 12 months in each year?
I, you know, I don't know. I would guess that we have, we don't have it down here, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, Commissioner, I got to tell you, I don't know for sure what the first six months would show.
Uh-huh. I'm just curious, what would it look like if you used the whole year versus using, you know, six months?
Okay. And again, all this was showing is a trend.
Sure.
That in the same six months, we seem to have done better. We can easily get you, you know, later on, an entire year to see what the whole year is, but I don't have that tonight.
Could you?
Pardon me?
Could you please follow up?
Sure, we could.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jude. Just hit the enter key. Just do that. Okay. Again, I think we showed that one, and this is just kind of the overall in the thousands, and it's the six-year trends. And again, you're looking down on the bottom here for the color code, and, you know, the one I look at a lot is the state taxes, because that's a major source of revenue. That's the purple one, and you can see that, you know, through eight, nine, and 10, they were very flat, yeah, but then I blocked their view. Through eight, nine, and 10, they've been very flat, and we've been showing just a minor increase in 10 and 11. But there is no question that in 2010, the taxes have come up a little bit from where they were in 11. And we are projecting, moving forward, and we'll see a better slide on this in a bit, a modest increase in 2012, fiscal 2012. Go ahead. Here's the, you know, just a more of a breakdown of the state sales taxes, and going into, now, here, I guess I can do it from here. You know, a real high in 2007, and you could see how low we dipped, you know, in 2010, we came up a little bit in 2011, and again, we're projecting a minor increase again for Utility franchise taxes, same type thing. Again, the color code is on the side. And gas, you're going to see, I guess that's the kind of beige color in there. And if you look at it and think about what gasoline prices were during those periods, you'll understand why our taxes were higher and lower during those various times of the year, or times of the last several years. Here's the major funds excluding highlights. We're estimating... I'm sorry, excluding highlights, I have a story about that too, but we'll save that. Estimated total revenues this year, $22,029,600. The increases include an estimated 5 percent on utility franchise taxes, or about $84,000. Water rates are going to go up an average of 5 percent, or $163,000. And keep in mind, that's generally tied to the water rate increase that we are passing along from the city of Chicago. Garbage recycling and yard waste will be going up $53,000 in terms of revenue, and that's due to a 3 percent increase that became effective on January 1st of this year. Next, please. We're requesting total expenditures this year, total expenses of $21,915,200, to show a surplus of $190,500. When you're looking at a $22 million budget, $190,000 is not that much. And, you know, to put it a little bit in perspective for you, as you know, we had a big snowstorm this year, and we were lucky enough that FEMA came along, and they paid us for two days of that storm. And two days of that storm got us about $60,000. We really worked that storm probably for two full weeks. Not overtime every day, and not all the equipment, but certainly, a couple of those storms a year, and that surplus is pretty much gone. And remember, FEMA came to the rescue to a certain extent this year. They're not always going to come to the rescue. When the village expended a lot of money on the floods last year, the state was not declared a disaster area by the president, there was no money to be had for that. Here's how we're looking at it specifically. In the public affairs, the total request this year is $893,400, and it's $42,900 more than what we've expended in 2011. The biggest increase in public affairs is one tax sharing agreement that we have with Curry Motors. This will be the first year that we've had a full year to pay on that. The year previous, we only had the first six months. This year, we'll have a full year. And so you know, we estimate that that payment will be $60,000, $70,000, something like that, on that line. So, if you add just that one in, you can see that overall, public affairs has actually cut their budget, on everything except that one grant. The line item set has significantly changed the business agreements, and that is Curry Motors and some of the others that we have. We did add in this year $30,000. That's new money, and that's on the flood prevention program. I'm sorry. That's on the flood prevention program. Legal and police and fire commission. So, everybody is clear that...
Tim?
Yes, sir.
Why did you put the flood prevention program under public affairs?
Because that's out of the mayor's budget, and it's, you know, maybe the mayor would like to comment.
Sure. Commissioner, all grants, at least by current village ordinance, fall under the commission of public affairs.
Mayor, because this is a new program for the village, and given the work that public health and safety does, you know, the permits for flood, or permits for plumbing permits go through public health and safety, you don't think it would make more sense to put that program in public health and safety?
It's a grant program, and grants come under the public affairs.
That's the precedent.
It's not the precedent, that's current law.
Thank you, Mayor.
Information technology, we've added $15,000 to that budget, and that is, I'm sorry, what?
It's red.
I'm sorry, what is it?
It's down.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see that, it's red, but it is a color of red. And is the legal and police fire commission red as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Those are a couple of things that I've actually cut down. Information technology, we've actually brought that down a little bit, and the public affairs budget also includes 80 percent of my salary. The rest is spread out in the other departments. In the police department, their request this year is for $4,291,100, or $120,500 more than the fiscal 2011 budget, or 3.5 percent. Here's where it was. $124,000 actually came in just wages. As all of you, I guess maybe know or don't know, the police department and their union is, they have two years left on a contract that will give them 4 percent pay increases over 2011 and 2012. So, again, the police department has basically kept their budget neutral, with the exception of wages. Those are union contracts that we don't have much ability to affect until we renegotiate January of, or excuse me, April of 2012. Go ahead. Also, in the police department, we're including $55,800 in technology costs. There are no new police vehicles this year out of the general fund. The police department will be buying some new vehicles out of their vehicle fund and their seizure fund, which is a part from our general fund. Go ahead, Jude. In the community center, their request is for $712,900, or $72,200 more than their budget of 2011. Interesting to note that their associated revenue is up $119,000. This budget is based on full staffing for maximum capacity, and they haven't been full staffing in a while, or fully staffed in a while, excuse me. Continue. It includes $60,000 for a major senior trip, and Karen, where are you going?
We don't know yet.
Okay. And so all of you know, again, mostly for the newly-elected officials, the village fronts the money for the 60,000, the seniors pay it. It's a wash. It's, you know, it's dollars in and dollars out.
It is those events, though, that end up getting some of us in trouble, because frankly, the newspaper doesn't understand it, and members of the public don't understand it. We went through this big fiasco last year with Rib Fest, even with some elected officials who didn't seem to understand it either. We have, in particular, in the community center, you know, this is a pay-as-you-go. We have to account for it in our budget because the village is the one writing the check, either for transportation or to wherever the seniors end up going, Playland or wherever it is that they go. But the seniors pay the full cost of the event. So, it's a, it ends up being, they call it revenue neutral, right?
We have, we have a contract together, and we buy 30 trips, and 15 people go. Does the agreement get adjusted?
Karen?
Yeah.
Give Karen the mic.
Okay. We only pay, we only pay for the people that go, and our trips, we have a waiting list on every week. We very rarely don't fill a trip. We sometimes take two buses out with 100 seniors on it. There's a line outside the door for newsletter day.
Don't the seniors prepay?
Oh, yeah.
So, they prepay?
And if they prepay, and if they cancel, they can't have their money back unless they can find somebody to take their place.
And take it from a person that knows, because I've had seniors call me because they did cancel, and we did not give them refunds, and they were upset, and, you know, they called me to complain. But that's how it's all put together there. They have to prepay, because we're on the hook, you know, for whatever the event is. And it's absolutely revenue neutral. But, you know, that's important because a lot of the public has been misinformed, and I think as elected officials, we all have a responsibility and an obligation, when we encounter members of the public that are misinformed, to give them the correct story. You know, that's the right thing to do.
Karen, would it be accurate to say that we're using the buying power of the village when we're buying trips in bulk, for example, 30 or 40 seniors at a time, that we're providing a value to our senior citizens by reducing their cost? Do you have an estimate of how much that saves our senior citizens who take advantage of those programs? Do you think you could work on giving me a number, just so that we can present to the public?
And we always overcharge a little bit, too, so it's not, so if they don't fill that trip totally, we still make up for it, because we overpaid, you know, we overcharged a little bit, seven or eight dollars per person.
What it really amounts to is that, let's say that they're going to take a trip out to Pheasant Run, to go see a show out at Pheasant Run. Pheasant Run isn't going to sit on the phone for four days, trying to get every senior who wants to go on that trip to give them their credit card information or whatever it is. Again, the village fronts the money, we're going to bring 40 people out there, we pay the bill off of one of our credit cards, and then we get reimbursed from the resident. And to that end, I want to make sure that you folks are aware that we've all read in the last couple of weeks that the newspaper is hot on the trail of the park district and their credit card receipts. I know that newspaper has also FOIA'd all of the credit card receipts from the school district, and just recently, the newspaper FOIA'd all of our credit card receipts. And I can guarantee you that on one of those credit card receipts, it's going to say some restaurant down in the city for $2,500, or some number like that, that seems outrageous. It's for a senior trip that we've been reimbursed for. Just so you know, you're going to read it, and I'm confident, as the mayor said, that they may not print the whole story, or they may not understand the whole story. Go ahead, Jude.
Tim?
Yes, sir.
One last quick question. The transportation for those events, we provide the bus service for them, or is that...
It's, go ahead, Karen.
We charter a bus, and we have free enterprise. You know, I have to have my microphone working. Free enterprise, we have a contract with them. We, they give us a really good discount on it, and they come every Wednesday, and it's the same driver, been the same driver for the last 16 years, so he helps, too. And, yeah, and they pay, they charge us...
So, the senior pays for the trip, and that's...
And, and...
That covers the cost of that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, when, because does Terry do all...
Yeah.
Terry Mefly is a village employee that works at the community center, and, oh, what's her title?
Well, she's got a lot of them.
Anyway, she does all the trip coordination. So, you know, when they put together these trips, which they do a lot every year, when they come up with a price, that's the price for the event, plus the transportation, add it together, they tell the senior it's $40, or, you know, whatever that sum number comes out to be, but that covers 100 percent of the costs associated with the trip.
And a little bit extra.
And a little bit extra.
Karen, with the trip coordinator who comes, who is a village employee that goes on the trip with the seniors, I'm assuming that that is comped by the, wherever they're going, if it's Pheasant Run or a restaurant downtown.
Yeah, she doesn't pay. Neither does the bus driver.
So, this is really truly providing value to our seniors at a revenue-neutral level?
Right, they love it.
And it's reducing their cost to allow them to get out and do different and exciting things?
They can go on these trips, they don't have to drive, they come, we pick them up, we take them to the center, we put them on a big coach bus, and off they go for the day.
Have we done an analysis just to see how much we're saving our seniors when they take advantage of one of our trips, relative to if they were just to drive out to Pheasant Run, for example?
No.
Is there some, is it possible that we could possibly do that, just sporadically on a couple, two, three, five trips over the next few months, just so we have a better idea of the value we're providing to our seniors?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, the village employee that goes, is being paid to go?
That's her job, to take care of 55 seniors, make sure they get seated in the restaurant, make sure the bill is paid, make sure that they get to the bathroom. A lot of them are wheelchair-bound and walker-bound, and so she's making sure that, and it's, I sometimes need two people to do that, but she does it.
I'm not saying it's not nice, but we do pay that person, if you're looking at it.
Of course. And, you know, we have a very active senior group in, at our community center. We have a very active group of seniors that live in the community, and if that employee that's going on the trip wasn't going on the trip, because maybe there is no trip, then that employee, who is being paid by the village, is there supervising activities for the seniors at the community center.
Got you.
So, it's a full, it's a fully expensed or burdened employee.
Okay, I was just asking.
And she drives the bus, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't want to break your stride.
Yeah, I don't, I'm on a roll, so, um, again, back to the community center, their increases, and again, this, this sometimes looks a little funny because all this is showing is the expense side. It does include Rib Fest. Um, the mayor mentioned at the last council meeting that the farmer's market is expanding this year. We're doing it at, um, Our Grove, at the Altenheim, and it's every week this year, right Karen? So it is expanding. This also includes the RTA buses that, that we operate for Pace and the drivers. Also included, and you'll see this in a couple of these areas, there's a new vehicle, um, for Karen, and it's not for Karen, I shouldn't say that, it's for the community center, um, which we will be financing over a period of four years, or five years, or whatever deal I can work out at the time.
Tim?
Yes.
May I ask just a real quick question?
Yes, you may.
Regarding the vehicle purchase, what type of vehicle are we looking at?
Typically, and I don't know this time, are you looking for a station wagon, Karen, or?
We would like a van, something that we could, cause we transport a lot of kids.
And, and, Tom, so you know, whenever the village purchases a vehicle, we purchase them off of the state bid contract. And so the state has, I don't know, three, four, or five different vendors, and you call them and say, "I want a Chevy van," and the state price is twenty-four thousand five hundred, bingo, it's done, whatever it is.
We shuffle a lot of kids around, especially with our clubhouse program, where, um, people can pay, it's a fee-based service. I don't know how much it costs clubhouse, but.
It's like eighty dollars.
Um, you know, they can, uh, parents can drop their children off, child or children, at the community center during the school year. And, uh, and then our counselors take care of those kids until school time. And then we're, you know, transporting the kids to school.
I'm sorry.
And picking them up after school, bringing them back to the community center. We have, uh, we have two station wagons?
We have two wagons. One, one is really bad.
Well, I think those are like two thousand.
Yeah, they're two thousand.
Or two thousand one, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah. We almost lost a senior around the corner. She had to hold it, the door closed.
And, and again, Commissioner, just so you're aware, um, we, we do have the state bid, which we search out, but we always bounce that off of dealers in the area, just to make sure that, you know, there isn't some kind of a sale going on that we can get it cheaper.
Understood. And I guess this is more of a rookie question, um, which is my, my intended follow-up, is that at the board meeting, uh, this past Monday, we signed off on selling, I think, four or five surplus vehicles, um, to the West Central Municipal Conference. And I looked to see that we have money budgeted for a new vehicle. And I'm just curious as to why we couldn't take one of the vehicles set to be auctioned off and put that to use as opposed to purchasing a new vehicle?
They're all junk. I mean, these are all seized cars, Commissioner, that we've gotten, uh, through Jim and his guys and his hard work. And again, just for education purposes, here's what typically happens. If we happen to seize a car, and we go through the process, and eventually the courts award us the car, and it has any value to us, either as another undercover car, or, you know, I mean, occasionally we'll get something that's really a nice car. We don't sell those as surplus at WCMC. We take them to CarMax, or we take them to someplace where we can get a decent dollar value for them.
Now, keep in mind, you know, we agreed to put them up till, uh, put them up for auction, is what it is, at the WCMC. Uh, in, in the past, there's been times that, you know, we've not, uh, you know, at the auction, we've not gotten a price. Somebody has not bid on a particular vehicle, and then we have to end up, you know, driving it back here. Um, doesn't happen every time, but it does happen. But most of those cars, um, we, we wouldn't want our community center staff driving around. Really, what the community center needs, um, is like a fifteen passenger, you know, the supersized van is really what they need.
We use the police stations now. And that's held together.
And well, that, I think we got, uh, donated to us from the Park District.
Through most of the agencies in the village so far, so, go ahead, Jude.
Tim? Quickly, Karen, quick question. It didn't show, I didn't see the specifics on the money for Rib Fest and the farmer's market. Is that somewhere?
I believe that I'm going from memory, it'll be in your book, but I believe that this year we have Rib Fest in for forty thousand, and I think the market was five or ten thousand, something like that. I don't remember specifically, but it is in your book.
It is in the book, and it's broken down?
And again, that shows just the expense side. Um, again, Commissioner, um, last year, the Rib Fest actually made eleven thousand dollars because, starting either now or very shortly, we will start soliciting for, um, sponsorships and donations and things of that sort. Plus each vendor has to pay to be there. So last year, after we counted all the money and all the expenses, and again, before you asked the question, it was all the expenses, including public works overtime, and police overtime, and everybody's overtime, we were positive about eleven thousand dollars.
So there's a, there's a, in here, I just missed, there's a detailed list of what's we spending on?
Yeah, but it should be, it should be in here.
But it is in, I mean, it should be in the line items here, right Jude?
I don't have the detail from last year.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
I'm talking about this year. Is, is there a number in there this year for?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I thought.
But it's just the forty, not the specifics of what the forty is?
Oh, what I'm gonna use it on for?
Yeah. Could I, could everyone see that?
Yeah.
Sure.
The same thing every year. I mean, we spend, we just do the same thing. We make more money.
Okay. And the farmer's market, that's all cost? There's no money making from the farmer's market?
We bring in a little bit, cause we charge the vendors. So, the only reason we need money this year is just for to market it, just to get it, get it out there, get it assigned.
We have.
Projected income of five thousand dollars for the farmer's market.
For the farmer's market. And, and again, um, Chris, it's little stuff, like, the vendors gotta pay twenty-five bucks, uh.
We already got two thousand in from the vendor.
Right. So they gotta pay a little bit. We make each of them donate some money back to our, um, our food pantry. So there's a little bit of give and take on that area as well. But, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just asking questions, so don't take it as a negative tone.
No, no, no. And, and what I can do, because, um, I know we were, we prepared a very detailed, uh, cost summary analysis last year for the 2011 Rib Fest. I'll make sure that Karen and/or Judy gets you a copy of that in your mailbox.
Appreciate it.
Shortly.
Thank you.
Let's go to accounts and finance. I'll back up a few. Accounts and finance, the request this year is for four million eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred dollars. And that actually is one hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred dollars less than the 2011 budget. And here's why. Go ahead, Jude. Budget changes include, and this is almost entirely due to the efforts of our village clerk, a decrease in the liability insurance of forty-seven thousand, uh, five hundred dollars, a decrease in workers' comp by forty-eight thousand six hundred, and a decrease in collection fees of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. What I want you to understand with things like insurance, and I, and I gave a lot of the credit to Vanessa because she does a lot of that negotiation, but that is really especially in the liability and the workers' comp. That's a testament to each of these folks who make sure that their employees work safer. Workers' comp is based almost entirely on payroll and your losses. And when we start having fewer and fewer losses because we have safety training programs and we do all of the things that we're supposed to do, we start getting some credits back. So, um, we're really happy with the accounts and finance this year, and specifically our, um, our general liability and workers' comp insurance. Go ahead, Jude.
Tim? Just a real quick question. Um, across all the different village departments, I'm sure we could do the math real quick, approximately how much do we spend on workers' comp insurance as a village? Approximately?
Uh, the full year.
It was around four hundred and thirty-eight.
How many?
Four hundred and thirty-eight.
About four hundred and thirty-eight. Eight thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, and Vanessa will be looking.
Eleven thousand four hundred twenty for this year's.
Okay. In the fire department, two million seven hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred, or seventy-four hundred dollars less than the fiscal 2011 budget. Total wages actually went up eighty-one thousand four hundred. So again, the fire department had to have cut someplace else if their total budget is less, but the wages went up eighty-one thousand. Continue, Judy. Uh, this does include a new vehicle for the chief. Again, my thought is to package all of the vehicles together that we need, and I believe there's four or five of them. Package them all together, get a total dollar amount, and then start looking for the best loan opportunity that I can find. I know of the numbers that I'll get from Forest Park National, um, but once I get all the numbers in, and the purchase prices, then I will start shopping for a lender. My sense, quite honestly, is to work with Forest Park National. Obviously, they're our, our local bank. Uh, they do almost all the work for the village. They will never charge us if we pay it off early. So there's a lot of benefits to being able to, excuse me, pretty much write our own loan. Um, so, let's see. And by the way, I think the chief's car is eleven years old, chief? And that car's not going away. That's just moving on down the line and to some other service. You're keeping it in the fire department, aren't you? Right. Um, so, these vehicles, when we finally decide to get rid of them, have been through three or four lifespans already. Um, so, uh, one of the things that's happening this year, and frankly, it was a big, yes, sir, Mark?
Anybody who wants to read ahead on the vehicles, it is, its own section tab number nine covers all the vehicles as we go through it. So it's not a piecemeal questioning when it comes up. It has the retiring vehicle, and the replacement vehicle, and the estimate and the payments. So it might be easier to take that all as one felt swoop in the end.
Um, this year in the fire department, we are paying off, um, a couple of the vehicles. I think there's an ambulance and maybe a fire truck. Um, so we're gonna be paying those off this year, and that obviously helped us with a little bit of extra money, uh, that we won't have to be paying out anymore. Continue. Paramedic services are up twenty thousand. Um, uh, the mayor and I are still working on paramedic services, but, uh, we're gonna leave that in there for now, but I believe that we will be able to, um, work them over just a little bit and get a little help there. In public health and safety, the request is three hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred. It's up nineteen thousand seven hundred, uh, or six percent more than the fiscal 2011 budget, but the associated revenues are up forty thousand. This has to do with payroll. They're hiring some summer help. Um, I think we all recognize that, uh, there are things in the community that need attention. Um, uh, as the newly elected officials, you will be surprised now that it's important to you when you're driving around and you see garage doors that haven't been closed in ten years, or, uh, tall grass growing on various properties and things of that sort. The public health and safety department is going to make an, a concerted effort this year to, um, try and clean up a lot of those issues that we've had for several years. Continue. Total wages, um, two hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred, or seventy-six hundred. So obviously, that's a, a big piece of the six percent. Um, I had just a note on there that there are some fee increases recommended. We're gonna come to that towards the end of this presentation, cause I wanna talk to you folks about a lot of that stuff. Streets and public improvements.
Tim?
Yes?
Quick question. Looks like it wasn't on the, the books last year, a zoning consultant?
Yes.
That comes in at eighty-four thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Can you? Sorry, Judy?
Let me just listen to one at a time.
Oh. I just, it didn't, it shows up as a thirty thousand dollar loss last year that wasn't budgeted for, I believe, and then this year we're looking at eighty-four thousand dollars. What exactly is that?
I know, it's very confusing.
Thanks for explaining.
We have, uh, a lot of bills that come in that the village pays for contractors to review projects, and our zoning consultant does a lot of work for us that gets billed out to the people whose projects they are. And, uh, we plan to spend around eighty-four thousand, but you'll notice there's a line item for, I forget exactly what it's called, that offsets those expenses, so that the net cost of all the building, review consultants that we use will be around forty-five thousand, which is about what it was last year, which is about what it has been.
The description is a little bit misleading, because it's really not just zoning. It, it would be zoning and planning, really is a, a better descriptor. I don't know if we can change that maybe, in there.
And, and Commissioner, again, um, the person specifically, while it's not all of Joellen, some of it is, most of it is, uh, actually, but as Judy mentioned, whenever Joellen is working for the village on a specific project, um, for a builder like Walmart, and I'll use Walmart as the example, every minute that she spends working on the Walmart drawings, and making phone calls and doing all that stuff, gets rebuilt right back to Walmart, and then they pay us. With all of these clients, even frankly, a homeowner who wants to put a deck on their house, if that's gonna require, um, Joellen's expertise, and frankly, it doesn't as much anymore, Steve does a lot of it, we rebuild whomever is incurring the charge. So while you see it as a big number, there's an offsetting number that helps it out a little bit. And again, it's not just zoning. It's building, it's planning, it's, it's all sorts of things, uh, along those lines. To be fair, there are a number of general office things that Joellen does on the two days a week here that the village pays for. And, um, I think that, um, Steve and, and, well, Steve and myself, and I know now Commissioner Hoskins, would agree that that is very, uh, that is money very well spent, um, on her services.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, street, um, did you, okay. Streets and public improvements, request is for one million four hundred and seventy thousand four hundred. It's up seventeen thousand nine hundred. Total wages, uh, out of that seventeen thousand nine hundred, the wages were forty-six hundred dollars of it. Uh, additionally, um, it includes refuse removal of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand. You'll notice that that's going to be less, and that's because of some work that the village did with our contractor over the last year. Sweeper payments, thirty-one thousand. There's a new truck here with a plow, and so you know, that's replacing a truck that is, it's a nineteen ninety-eight, and, um, interestingly, that truck only works on the south side of town now. And that's because he can't get over the bridge. Um, so it was time. And this year, we put in ten thousand dollars for storm-related expenses. Hopefully, it's something we won't need. Although, based on what we saw this morning, um, believe me, John and I, and, uh, well, just about anybody was scared to death that the phone was gonna start ringing with basements. Luckily, we didn't get any. Public property, request, one point, uh, one million seven hundred nineteen thousand one hundred, uh, fifty-five thousand more than the fiscal 2011 budget. Eleven thousand two hundred was in wages. Additionally, uh, fleet operations, three hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred. That part of it is down sixty-nine hundred. Street and traffic lights, three hundred and thirty-five thousand. And I think actually, we're gonna be making some moves on that, because I have been dealing with Pinner. I believe that that number's gonna come down instead of up. Don't know what it is yet. Property maintenance, uh, is up thirty-six thousand five hundred, and again, for, um, the, the newly elected officials, the property maintenance is things like, we have, um, some money in this year in the community center. She needs some new ceiling tiles, or some carpeting in various places. I think there's some, uh, HVAC stuff that gets done in various places. So, you know, it's basically just the maintenance on the buildings. Portable salt dome has been in the budget since I've been in short pants, frankly. And, um, it's something that we really do have to do. It's, it's been in the budget for at least the last two or three years that I've been working, and, uh, we've just not pulled the trigger on it. Uh, every year, we throw away some salt, and it, it's hard to say how much, um, but being in John's position, position, it's very difficult to guess in March, do I need four more loads of salt? Can I live with what I have? So typically, we- So typically, we have salt left at the end of the year. And if we had the dome, we would be able to keep it easily until the next year. Even the salt that we use during the year, and I know this obviously from watching John and from my former life, they spend an inordinate amount of time just breaking up the salt because once it gets wet, it starts getting into big rocks. And they spend an inordinate amount breaking that up before they load it in the truck so that it can actually spread. Sidewalk replacement?
Tim?
Yes, sir.
Just a real quick question on the salt dome. Just a rough estimate, what do you think the payback on that is going to be in terms of lost salt, salt that simply goes to waste at the end of the year? Time spent by guys breaking up frozen rock salt because it actually does freeze? It seems to me that that's not a very large cost and that it would be a pretty quick payback.
Yeah, we have a guy, once it's below twenty degrees, pretty much every day, breaking up salt, all day, eight hours a day, one guy in a tractor. It's not only wear and tear on the tractor, but man-hours, and we probably get rid of, I'm guessing, twenty-five ton of salt every year just because of clumps and garbage, you know, it turns into garbage.
So that's about four thousand, three thousand dollars worth of salt, right, that we just get rid of?
Correct.
And you add on the cost of the staff wearing and tearing the equipment? So in theory, we could see a payback on this fairly readily?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's not even hard math, Tom. It's fairly simple math. It's just, we have been, while the math makes sense, to actually spend the money has been a hard issue for us because, you know, we just never know what's going to come up that may be more important. Sidewalk replacement is up five thousand. Playgrounds and parks is fifty thousand. That's up eighty-three-hundred.
Tim?
Yes?
Just sorry to keep interrupting you. On the sidewalk replacement, is that regular concrete or have we looked into, a lot of people talk about flooding, we actually mentioned it today, here today, have we looked at water-permeable concrete for all future sidewalk replacements to help have a long-term goal of making sure that more water can enter the ground as opposed to the sewer system?
Not yet. I did have a conversation today with Jim Emilio about it. He's going to look into it, so we are, you know, pursuing it.
Was there permeable concrete?
That's the rumor.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
So I actually asked Tom, John, to look into this because I think it could be something that we put a long-term plan together. Obviously, it's not something we can do, you know, next year or in the next ten years, but over the next twenty to thirty, as we do routine maintenance on sidewalks, I think it's important for us to be, you know, use green technology, but more importantly, take steps to help curb and alleviate some of the flooding issues our residents have, and I think this could be a low-hanging fruit way to do it, right, right from the get-go, you know, start day one.
So it's something that John's obviously on top of, Commissioner, and I will make sure to follow up with Jim as well. And then again, John has a pickup truck in his budget. Just in the water fund, we have the revenue trends over the last several years. Let me get my handy-dandy, you know, there are your different years, and you can see that, you know, they're two thousand and, I'm trying to see the year there. I guess that's just a commercial. What is this one that's down so low? I guess I don't, oh, the institutional, I see what it is. So that's basically what's happening in our water fund. You know, you could see the numbers there. Go ahead. Water department, their request is for four-million-one-hundred-eleven-thousand-three-hundred, two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-seven-hundred more than the fiscal two thousand eleven budget. Revenues are going to increase in that department by three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred, and that's based on a automatic increase in the water. Total wages are two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-four-hundred. Purchase water from the city is two-million-four-hundred-thousand, and that's up two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-eight-hundred. This does include, the dollars that we talked about, does include a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-six-hundred in interest payments to the IEPA on the two thousand one debt certificate. And again, for the newly-elected guys in two thousand one, we borrowed a bunch of money from the state to redo a probably half of all the four-inch water main in the village of Forest Park and made it eight-inch water main. This is what we're talking about in terms of the debt certificate, one-twenty-five-six in interest, and not included in that number are the principal payments of three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-five-hundred. Go ahead. Water fund continued. Total estimated revenues, four-million-four-hundred-and-six-thousand-six-hundred. Total expenses, four-million-one-hundred-eleven-thousand-five-hundred, and we didn't do the math there, but it's a surplus. Say again?
There's water.
Okay, moving on into the parking.
Before you leave water, you know, sooner or later, the water department, they need a new vehicle. Did you guys talk about that at all?
We have, Your Honor, and quite honestly, the water department has been asking for a new vehicle for many years. I'm just not quite ready to pull that trigger yet. George says it still has some life in it. I think you'll recall that the water department told us a bunch of years ago, they needed a new water truck. We got them one. Thiesee is still driving her old one. And it's close. I mean, we're in the ballpark, but I think we can live another year with it.
Tim?
Yes, sir.
Regarding water, there's been some speculation that the new mayor of Chicago is going to look to increase his own revenue on the backs of suburban residents by increasing what the city of Chicago charges for suburban water. Have we heard of any figures yet coming out of the mayor's office in Chicago that's going to have an impact on our residents' water bills?
We have not, but we are right now, I think we're in the middle of a three-year increase by the city where each year for the last two, and I think we're in the last year of it now, that they've already increased our rates significantly. It won't surprise me if they do that to some extent, and obviously, the village will just have to pass that expense along to the resident.
They did give us quite the notice when they...
Yeah, it, yeah, it doesn't happen overnight.
The city of Chicago regularly increases the cost of water that they supply to suburbia, and in most of those cases, we ended up passing along that increase. There have been one or two years, you know, that we intentionally did not pass it along, but it's nothing new at all.
And Commissioner, just so you know, typically, one of the things that we consider is not only the purchase of our water, but also paying the note that we have on that debt certificate. Go ahead, Judy. You could see it. In the parking fund, the request is seven-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-three-hundred, or fifteen-thousand-eight-hundred more than the two thousand eleven budget. Total wages for the parking fund are four-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-three-hundred. Includes annual, it includes an annual one-hundred-thousand-dollar transfer to the general fund, and that is for things that are, that they're nebulous. I can't put a dollar figure to them. It's plowing them, it's salting them, it's the IMRF, it's phones, et cetera, because I, there's no way that I can account for an employee's time when he drives through the A parking lot sweeping it. So Judy and I did some math, and we put together some estimates, and we determined and decided that a hundred thousand dollars was probably a reasonable number. Keep in mind that the four-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-three-hundred, because obviously, we don't have any one employee assigned to parking lots, that includes some parking enforcement, it includes some call-takers, it includes, who else? Stash and Mike Sinisi. So it includes Mike Ramandi. So, you know, it includes little bits and pieces of the various people who touch the lots, but the hundred thousand dollars accounts for everything that I can't quite put a dollar figure to. It also includes twenty thousand dollars, and it's listed as that Van Buren lot, but it's really parking lots in general. We are going to be looking this year to do some maintenance in them, and that's basically seal coating and striping and the patching that's necessary. Again, expense trends, you know, this is a difficult one to see it makes sense out of, but you can see, you know, that for the most part, we have been, well, we've absolutely been keeping our expenses as low as we can. Continue. This is an interesting slide, and it just, it just sort of tells you at each department how much we spend per department on each of the residents. And you can see it's twenty-two dollars for health and safety, accounts and finance is three hundred, the police is two-seventy-three, water department is whatever that number is there, two-sixty-two, fire is one-seventy-seven, public works is a hundred and nine, a hundred and eight and a hundred and five, six rather, in public affairs, ninety-three in streets and forty-six, or four-hundred, what is that? I can't remember. Forty-six, I'm sorry, in parking. But here's how our money actually gets spent. Wages and what is, was PF?
Parking, parking.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Wages and benefits. Mark, you're the guy, thirty-nine-point-seven and sixteen plus, sixteen-point-three, what's that total? Thirty, how many?
It says fifty-six.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't read that. Fifty-six percent out of every penny that comes into the village goes towards wages and benefits. Twenty-five-point-six percent is in the other general fund, seventeen is in the water fund, and parking fund is one-point-three, just that little sliver at the top. But that's interesting to note, when we start talking about cutting things, and each of you now have had an opportunity to look within your own departments, and there's not a lot of room to cut things. So when we have to start cutting, and I'm hopeful, and I think, I'm very confident as a matter of fact, that we're going to be okay, but when you understand that fifty-six percent of every dollar that we come in goes for employees and benefits, it does appear that that's the likely place that we'll see the cuts when they have to happen. I think we're going to weather the storm. Estimated total revenues from, okay, from the grants. Net expenditures over revenues, so these are the grants we have coming. We expect that out of all the grants we got coming in, the village is going to have to come up with about forty-five-thousand-four-hundred. Other funds excluded, special revenue funds, total revenues, one-point-six, and expenditures are one-point-five. Debt service, revenues three-point-four, expenditures five-point-one, and the excesses from the TIFs. So here's the summary. Here's what it all comes down to. If you click it once more, Judy, it comes up. Again, one more year, folks. A bare-bones budget in fiscal two thousand twelve. We've reduced the original requests by four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-nine-hundred. That's with the participation and cooperation of the department heads. The vehicle request, I have that they'll be financed by Forest Park National. That's not a given. They've got to do what I want them to do before that happens. And then some of this parking lot resurfacing that we talked about is paid for with grants. So far, and we're going to move on to this slide, there are no fee increases included. I believe, the economists believe, and I'm an eternal optimist, that the economic recovery is happening. Anecdotally, many of you know, my wife sells real estate. The phone is ringing again for people buying houses. There are people coming in and investing large amounts of money on Madison Street again. The new restaurant going in where Saber Groceries was, that was one of our biggest spaces on Madison Street. That construction, I think, has started now. If it hasn't, it's very close to starting, very soon. There are people investing good money to start working on Madison Street again. We've had some interest, let me just say that, we've had some interest in the Old Tragie Building. So the people are starting to come out of the woodwork again to start investing money. But here's the kicker. We're going to have to start looking at some revenue increases for future stability. We cannot continue operating when I have to come down here April or May of every year and say, I've got a hundred or a hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar surplus figured into the budget. You'll notice that there's nothing in there for capital improvements. There's nothing. And everybody says, well, you should have a capital improvement budget. And I always say, yeah, I believe that we should. If you show me the revenue stream, I'd be happy to start one today. They say you should have six months of reserves, and I always say, yeah, I know we should. I don't necessarily believe six months, but there is some number, but I need a revenue stream, okay? I think that for the most part, you would all agree, there is not a lot of fluff in this budget, so we need to start looking at some increased revenue. And here are some ideas. In the general fund, we're thinking of, not we are, you are, thinking of increasing vehicle stickers. If you increase passengers to thirty and seniors to five and all other, the different cabs and trucks and different things like that proportionately, just that five-dollar increase nets us thirty-three thousand a year. Parking permits, increase from twenty to twenty-five and quarterly from forty to fifty. That's fifty-two thousand dollars in revenue. Business licenses, and let me stop here. These are all proposals. These are all a thought process that we've come up with. Nothing's set in stone. These are all things for you to talk about. Business licenses. If we increase them fifteen percent, those are the dollar numbers that we're talking about. Building permits, and we'll show you some history on when the last time they were looked at. It's been a while, but if we increase building permits ten percent overall, that's twenty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred. So very small increases mean a lot of extra dollars for us. Go ahead, Judy. In the parking fund, the Van Buren lot here at the CTA is currently three dollars a day. The CTA parking lot right next door to it is five dollars a day. Our car, our parking lot is filled right to the brim every single day except Saturday and Sunday, and there might be four cars in the CTA parking lot. It seems to me, and I've got to do a little bit of work with Vanessa because we think there may be some problems with it, if we can, we should put that lot at four dollars a day. That's a hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-dollar increase. The CTA parking at Circle, believe it or not, you can park all day there for two dollars. Isn't that right, John? You could park on Circle going up to the CTA station, park all along Circle Avenue at the meters, and get twelve hours for two dollars. That should be increased, and obviously, just that small increase brings in a significant amount of money. All of our meters are behind the times, and we have some other issues with some changes that we need to make on Madison Street with two-hour parking and things of that sort. Longer hours of enforcement, currently, it's nine to six. We could extend the time, and I mean, all these things have consequences as well. You know, do we want to start writing tickets in our business district past six o'clock? I don't know. But all things to think about. Continue. Water fund. One of the things that's happened is the village council several years ago, when they got the notice that the city of Chicago was going to increase our water fees by whatever dollar amount it was, they passed on the cost of the water only to each of the consumers, each of the residents in town. We never considered then that we should be adding some percentage to the infrastructure, and certainly, it costs us more every year to move the water. We have to pump it, we have to test it, we have to do all kinds of things to it, we have to maintain the water mains, we have to maintain the water tanks. We need to start looking again at some sort of an increase to build that water fund back up so that we can start doing some infrastructure. to build that water fund back up so that we can start doing some infrastructure work as well. And here's just a couple of suggestions. If we just add $2 a month to each meter and call it infrastructure, that's 82,000. $5 a month is 205. Continue, Judy. So I just want to, well, before I move on to vehicle stickers, this morning at a staff meeting, the fire chief brought up the issue of a specific sewer tax or a sewer fee. And Steve lives in River Forest and they have one in River Forest. And obviously, we were all thinking at the table when we were discussing it that this village recognizes very clearly that we have an antiquated sewer system and really no way to pay to, to make it a modern sewer system. We continue to have issues on an annual basis with sewers that are collapsing and sewers that need just regular routine maintenance. I talked to John today about doing a lot. He's doing a lot already with just vacuuming out debris in them. A possibility is to add a fee annually, quarterly at each water bill for sewer maintenance. And, you know, it doesn't have to be that much of a hit to each of the residents. Here's what I wanted to talk to you though about vehicle stickers. The vehicle stickers are designed to pay for road maintenance, snow plowing, alley plowing, sweeping, signage, all of those things. All of those expenses go up every year. We saw what the wages are going up in the, the streets and public improvements department. They're going up every year. Gas prices go up every year. Insurance goes up every year. And we've kept our vehicle stickers fairly low and stable for a number of years. That's a quick rundown on how many stickers we sell every year. Go ahead, Judy. 2004 was the last increase.
Tim?
Yes. Somebody, okay. I didn't see who asked yet.
Aside from being absolutely opposed to any increases. Quick question on a better actual enforcement. I am positive that there are far more vehicles than, I saw this last year when that came up in last year's meeting. There are far more vehicles than actually have the stickers. Is there any way to actually enforce, I have my sticker, you know, I'm sure we all have our stickers, the actual, when you have a vehicle registered in Forest Park, to get a sticker on the window?
I actually got a voicemail today from a young woman who did not get her vehicle sticker. And she has been ticketed twice in the last two days for her failure to have her vehicle sticker. And she's probably going to get another ticket tonight because she was at work and she wasn't able to come into Village Hall.
Let's let Chief Ryan speak to that issue because ironically, he presented some research to a woman who actually is an annual complainer about that very same reason, you know, about enforcement. Because frankly, there are a lot of people that don't buy the vehicle stickers. And in her mind, she felt we just don't do anything. Go ahead, chief.
Yes, we got a complaint about a week ago that we weren't adequately enforcing vehicle licenses. And since the first of April to about a week ago, we wrote 1,090 tickets for no valid vehicle license. And we're going to start our roadblocks where we start stopping vehicles coming out of residential areas to cite the vehicles that are parked in garages.
Now, keep, also keep in mind, you know, we, so the enforcement is, we see a car, we know that their car belongs here, we write them a ticket, right? Now, they're responsible for paying that ticket. But some people pay the ticket and still do not buy the vehicle sticker. So we, all we can do is just repeat the process.
The, my question would be, is there a way to team up with the Secretary of State and have all of the vehicles registered in the city of Forest Park? So we know, I mean, I got to be honest with you, probably shouldn't. I lived here for five years before I bought a vehicle sticker.
Sure.
Parked my car in a garage and no, nobody.
And Commissioner, frankly, there are a lot of people that do that very same thing.
I don't think, I don't remember, but there was no, I never got a notice in the mail to get the sticker. I even, I don't think I knew I needed a sticker for those first five years until I think I saw a sticker.
We've done a couple of things. Actually, it was probably 10 years ago that we started partnering with the Secretary of State and getting their data for cars that are, at least according to their records, registered here. And when you look at our ordinance, the village's ordinance, there's a two-pronged test that make you eligible for getting a ticket. One is, is that if the car is registered here, according to SOS, that's prima facie evidence that you are obligated to have a sticker. If your vehicle is regularly housed here, that's a separate test whereby we can issue tickets. And we do both. Now, two years now, I think in a row, you may have noticed four by eight signs that were up for a month or six weeks. At least a month before due date. Big reminders to buy vehicle stickers. It is hard to get all of the SCOF laws. Because those that do park in a garage, unless we send you a notice, which we do. Now, the system's not perfect. We don't update with Secretary of State every year. We did it two years ago. So we have a pretty, pretty good database. And then, you know, that was merged with our already existing database. And we do send invoices or bills, whatever you want to call it, to households. I don't, did you get one this year in the mail?
Oh, I've had a sticker now though. Before I ever got a sticker, I never got anything. Until I, once you get the sticker, sure, you get the reminder.
Mayor, would you know the head count on how many the Secretary of State said are registered in Forest Park versus the purchase? Are we getting 50, 75%? Do we know our hit? Because that, that could put away a lot of people who say, well, nobody buys them if we're selling whatever that number was.
6,000, it should look like, right?
I don't know, was. Okay, you could, if you pop it back two screens, we'd have it. You had total sold. Even went down to motorcycles. There you go. Okay, so you say 54. We have that to compare and say, okay, we're getting 50%. We need to go up. Or with this new enforcement, we're getting a bigger number. It would give us a really good tracking number. And how do we only have two car dealership purchases?
Well, number one, I think that's probably one from a couple of years ago, but clearly, it's not accurate. You know, we need to get some more.
Do you have dealer plates?
And each one of those dealers has 100 plates. Every, everybody works for them drives one. But it might be worth following through on that one. And $18 for a dealer and 25 for a resident seems a little low.
I, just a real quick question. I noticed on one of the line items that we spend money on an online subscription for record information services. And if memory serves me, I believe that this organization provides records of new move-ins to a community. Is it possi-
I think I know which one you mean, but go ahead.
Is it possible to use that information as people move into the community? And if this is the database, I think it is, I believe you could target based off residential, condo, single-family home, et cetera, to send a welcome to the community letter? And please note, here's a couple tips and pointers, you know, welcome to our village. You need to get a vehicle sticker. Here's one. Summerfest is. Stop at Village Hall for a calendar. So that we educate people when they move in about the need to purchase a vehicle sticker to prevent having, to write them a ticket, to help educate them.
Okay. Just so you know, Commissioner, we do a lot of that because they have to come to us to turn the water on. And when we do that, they typically get that package. So as the mayor mentioned, it's not a perfect system. But we try. And, and again, when the chief tells you that they've written 1,100 tickets, I think that that takes everybody by surprise, that they've written that many tickets in a month. So.
And we really do try to, you know, to work with the folks. You know, if they got a ticket, they come in, buy their vehicle sticker. Generally, the police department waives that ticket, provided we get compliance.
Here's just some of the information on the surrounding communities. In Oak Park, it's $50, 45 if you buy it online, 39 for a senior. Berwin is 35, River Forest is 45, North Riverside is 30, Cicero is 40 and free for seniors. So based on surrounding communities, we have a little bit of room that we could work with. Go ahead, Judy. My proposal would be that we pass an ordinance after you folks think about it a little while that goes into effect on January 1, each of the next two years. So we get those numbers to where they should be. So we can pass it now, put it in place January 1st, 2012. Second?
Is your goal to go to 25, 30 and then 30, 35?
Probably, yeah, five, I'm sorry. Probably $5 each of the next two years. That, and, and again, suggestions I'm tossing out, I'm ready and willing to take input on it. But just keep in mind, each $5 increase nets the village about $30,000 in new revenue. Business licenses have not been raised in Forest Park for more than 10 years. Staff has completed a survey of, of the area and determined that Forest Park has a competitive business license fee structure. I don't think I would be recommending at this time, when the businesses are just starting to climb out, a raise or a fee increase for the businesses. Various permits, building, plumbing, electrical. I can only tell you that there's been nothing in the last 12. It could go further than that. We're doing a survey area-wide with other municipalities just to sort of see what other towns are doing. And we will come back to you folks with some information on that. Increase for the fire pensions this year is 26,093. Previous year was 226,900. That was because they based, they had a huge increase in their investments planned and they actually didn't come anywhere near that. So that made that huge swing. This year, obviously, their investments did much better. Go ahead. Police, about the same thing. Increase this year of 60,000. Last year's was over 149. Again, they assumed that big increase on their investments didn't happen. Pension notes. There's no new money required for fiscal 2012. We will continue to fund at the fiscal year 2010 level of 1,178,894. Go ahead. Police pension right now is funded at 67%. It was at 66% in '09, or excuse me, in '10, 66. 60.2 for the fire department. It was 62 in '10. We've never missed a pension payment. We've never deferred a payment. And when they talk about percent funded, here's what they mean. If an employee were to retire and the village never made another payment or the investments never made another profit, that retiree would only be able to receive that percentage over the next 30 years. A couple of things are happening with pension funds. The state has allowed the actuaries now, and I believe it's in place now. Okay. So we know what percent funded means. We believe that the state is going to change some laws which make a difference on how, well, they already have, on how long they're stretching out the payments. If they stretch them out to 30 years again, that will make our percent funded come up automatically without investing any more money. And I believe that's it.
We're going to, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes and then we'll come back. Questions, answers. We'll go through whatever sheets anybody has any questions on and we'll take it from there, okay? So we're going to recess for 10 minutes. We're reconvening the budget meeting of May 25. And so Commissioners, what we've done so far is, you know, you received a presentation from Tim Gillan, kind of highlights of this year's proposed budget. He did want me to remind you that included in this budget are known pay raises for our contract employees, anybody that's a member of a union. And those raises vary, you know, by percentage. But it also includes 2% for handbook employees. So everybody outside the union. But then for Tim, police chief, fire chief, no raises. Just for the three. So village administrator, police chief, fire chief, 0% increase. So what we'll do at this time is open it up for any and all questions. And I encourage you to ask questions. You know, there's a lot of information here. You know, it's a lot to digest. We've never really finalized our budget on the one budget meeting night. You know, typically what happens before the night's over, you know, there might be some recommendations to either take some line items up or some line items down. If the majority concur with that, you know, then we would have Judy go back, rework the numbers and then present the elected officials with a finalized version of our budget. So there's no formality. It's open for questions.
Your honor. Just for clarity's sake, I believe those three were held at zero as a placeholder. I don't think it's the intended recommendation of the village administrator that those three people be held at a 0% raise.
All of this is a proposal from staff.
Right, but I, I'm just saying I believe the 0% was a placeholder, not an intended recommendation.
Excuse me. Quite honestly, your honor, the three of us have discussed it. And while obviously gladly we would accept the raise, we also understand that times are tough. And we are fully prepared to take a zero if that is the desire of the council and the public. So.
Do you want to start by department?
If I could, just remembering from last year, the way it worked is we just went tab by tab and that might help get the discussion started.
We're going to do the same thing. So we'll start with tab number two. Public Affairs Administration and Community Center.
Mayor, does that mean we skip revenues and we're just going right through the departments?
If you, if you want to start a revenue.
Come back to that? That just, we do come back to it?
Let's start with number one. No, let's back up. We'll start with number one.
I have a quick question. When, looking at amusement devices. I believe I heard it was mentioned maybe last year. But video poker, has that ever been considered?
Hasn't been passed by the state yet.
Is that, if it happens, is that on our table? Would we consider that?
We would, we would have to either accept it or, or reject it here locally.
Mr. Mayor, currently, there's actually a pending lawsuit in the Illinois Supreme Court specifically regarding video poker, as well as the additional liquor tax thing imposed when they passed the capital program. Because the video poker, increased fees on certain businesses, business types and increased tax on liquor were actually being used to finance the bonds, the $31 billion worth of bonds for the capital program. And under the Illinois Constitution, it's a single-subject provision. With any bill that you pass out of the General Assembly, it was challenged on that provision at the circuit level. And then at the appellate level, the appellate court basically said, no go. You violated single-subject provision. And it was just heard earlier this week, actually, at the, in the Illinois Supreme Court, whether or not to sustain the appellate court's ruling that that violated the Illinois Constitution's single-subject provision. Currently, in the video poker laws, it was written, it's up to a municipality to actually opt out of video poker, with the exception of Chicago, of course, because they're a unique animal.
So we would have to vote to opt out?
Correct. And they actually have floated several amendments down in Springfield that said if a municipality does opt, and this was after Cook County actually opted out of, or I'm sorry, DuPage County actually opted out and several DuPage County municipalities did it. The General Assembly actually introduced legislation saying, if a municipality opts out of video poker, they're not eligible for any of the improvements under the capital program. They have a pretty big stick down there.
Yeah.
What my suggestion on that? Who knows if the state's actually going to get around to it? They're starting to sour on gambling. Sit back and wait if it happens or ever gets out of Springfield. Sit back and wait if it happens or ever gets out of Springfield in this decade and move on it then. Because they're arguing it back and forth. They're looking for other ways to get capital money. They're looking at casinos, that Chicago Now Wants Casino, which would kill the ability to put it into local small-spot poker machines. What they talked about two years ago and based their budgets on two years ago in Springfield, they haven't even gotten past near getting done.
My discussion was based on, it seemed, at least possibility of this year that it might come up.
I wouldn't expect it in a Springfield session.
Maybe, but I think it's going to be a long shot. You know, I think if and when the time does come, it absolutely is worthy of discussion, you know, here locally, whether or not we want to opt out. Certainly, I've heard from, you know, those businesses that are eligible to be able to put machines in, and many of those would like to have them. You know, but it's a fundamental issue that needs to be discussed, you know, by this body, if and when the time comes.
Okay.
Your honor, two issues under the department on expenses.
On revenue?
Well, I was moving to expenses. But I can wait for revenue if you've got another one.
Quick, one last quick revenue question?
Sure.
On the estimated 3% to 3.5% decrease in local share sales tax, you talked about what you look at as a vibrant business community and this kind of a little more of a sparkle happening on Madison Street, and you're looking at a 3% to 5% increase, I'm sorry. I have one additional question. We, they'll bring up the big elephant over at Roosevelt and Displanes, the dormant car dealership. Have we talked, I know it's overpriced and it's hard to move, but have we aggressively pursued any kind of, anyone to take that over?
What's your definition of aggressively?
Well, I mean, I don't know the exact details of that Curry deal they got, but better than the Curry deal that they got. I don't know exactly what the Curry deal is, but...
Mayor? I just want to add quickly that I think any commissioner, if they know of an interested business, you know, can market that corner. And we can get information from the village administrator about potential costs for acquisition of the property. I know that on occasion, I had a developer who came to Forest Park to look at various sites. It's something that we can and should be doing, and I think that kind of falls under aggressive marketing, but, you know, it's a privately-owned piece of property.
You know, your honor and commissioner, you know, as you mentioned, that's a privately-owned piece of property. To anybody in Illinois or frankly, in the United States who's looking for, you know, almost eight acres, I think is about what it is, somewhere between five and eight acres of property, they know that that site's available. They also know that the village has offered, car dealers specifically, tax incentives to move in there. The issue isn't so much right now whether or not somebody wants to move in there, it's more that the sellers haven't seen the number that they want to see yet. But believe me, as aggressively as possible, we are marketing that property to the extent that we can.
Are we pursuing, say, the host of dealerships down in North Riverside that may have the ability to easily, I mean, this is the same location for them?
How many dealers do you have in North Riverside?
Isn't there two right there? There's a Ford and a...
Mercury.
Is it Ford Mercury right in?
Well, you've got Castle around the corner with Pontiac.
There's two, Ford and Castle.
Yeah.
I mean, that's during, literally, within a mile and a half. Those would be an easy, you're not bringing in, you're moving a business that's, not to take it away from North Riverside, but hey, we'd rather have them, you know?
We've, you know, we absolutely have spoken to at least one car dealership on the potential of relocating to that site. At this particular moment, I think that the primary logjam is the current owner's asking price. You know, they're asking too much money. Now, I certainly would entertain any one that has a recommendation on how we get the current property owner to reduce their sales asking price. You know, if there is some legitimate way in which we could encourage that, I certainly would listen.
Can't be a benefit for them to have it sit there and do nothing.
You know, you're, it, sometimes it's amazing, you know, why some investors sit on a piece of property vacant the way that they do, where Fiorensa's is now going to be opening, the old Saber Grocery Store. You know, that site's probably been empty for close to three years. I personally know the property owner, just from meetings, you know, where he's come in to see the mayor. Not for that property, but he was interested in some other locations. You know, some wealthy individuals get tax advantages by writing off, you know, carrying costs associated with their vacant property, and so it actually helps them for high net worth individuals. So, but it's kind of counterintuitive because you say, you know, you'd be, you'd be doing better if you had it rented, right? I mean intuitively, that's what you're drawn to, but some high net worth individuals actually use that as tax shelters. The corner of Roosevelt and Displanes is a little bit challenging. Certainly would be best suited, you know, for a car dealer. That's how the building was set up, although you're limited on the product line that could go there. Notwithstanding the fact of being able to, like, relocate Ford from North Riverside or Castle GMC, you cannot bring another Chevy dealership there. You cannot bring another Dodge dealership there. You cannot bring another Chrysler dealership there, because Park Plaza Dodge, which is now Hawk, is picking up the Chrysler line along with Jeep. So you can't put any of those product lines on that corner there. They've got a five, I think it's a five-mile, you know, radius limitation. So the product line is limited. One of the dealers from North Riverside, you know, has spoken to us, but I'm not certain that that's going to go anywhere. We've also had some conversations, I have, in roundabout ways with the Ford dealer. He ultimately would like to sell, but the price that he's asking for to sell is more than other car dealer owners are willing to pay. But some of those conversations are still ongoing.
Just when we're looking for new revenue, and I talked with Park Plaza months ago, and just based on their sales, we're talking about $400,000 roughly in possible sales tax that, hey, it's sitting there. Have we done, have we exhausted every option? Sounds like we've done some legwork. It's good to hear.
Just that one wall you run into, until she moves on her price.
Tim, can I ask another revenue question? At the very beginning of your presentation, you had mentioned that we were losing 68.4% of our red light camera revenue, approximately. And one of the reasons because, I'm assuming it's because of learned behavior, people are now actually stopping and following the law at lights, which I think that's a very good thing to make the intersection safer. But you also pointed out that we had to turn off some of our red light cameras due to other municipalities doing road construction? And because obviously, at the end of the presentation, you had mentioned new revenue streams, are we doing anything to try and recoup that lost revenue from the other municipalities that have forced us to turn those cameras off?
I, have I specifically called them? No. I've been led to believe that that's not going to happen, that that's not an argument that we're going to win.
I'll put Commissioner Manix in charge of contacting Bowlin and Oak Park.
Yeah. You know, that's all kind of handled through Red Speed and stuff, and it's not, my understanding, commissioners, that you sign an agreement that if that happens and they got to shut it down, they got to shut it down.
Okay. I was just curious about that. And then another question regarding motor fuel tax money, as well as the municipal portion of sales tax, with gas prices increasing, how is that going to impact, are we going to see a net loss between the two, between the two types of taxes that we receive from gas? Right? Because we receive the motor fuel tax and our, what is it, 1.5% on sales tax on a gallon of gas, which should, in theory, because gas is so much more expensive, cover what we're losing in the motor fuel tax?
Yeah, maybe. I mean, you know, who knows? Maybe people will stop driving less because gas costs $5.
Well, I was just wondering if we'd looked at historical numbers when gas was, you know, not nearly as expensive as today? If we've looked at historical numbers to kind of analyze that, so that as we look forward over the next fiscal year, we have an idea kind of of how that's going to ebb and flow relative to the two different, you know, types of tax revenue we get from a gallon of gasoline?
I don't know if we can drill down far enough to that level, you know, because we're reliant on the Illinois Department of Revenue. They're the ones that disclose the handful of sources on where the sales taxes come from, based upon, it's a very small number of SIC codes, S-I-C. And I think, we certainly can look at it, but I think that they group some of those industries together, and so it's real hard to, like, drill down and say, how much did we receive in taxes on gasoline sales, for instance? Because they have it, like, lumped together with car dealers and other automobile or auto repair businesses that might do actual repairs.
I would think that because we get a flat fee per gallon on the motor fuel tax portion, I believe that's a flat fee, not a percentage fee, that we should be able to do some...
It's about $5, I believe, cents.
MFT is different.
Right, right. That we should be able to do some pretty quick math to potentially...
So I know last year when the price dropped, the MFT revenue went down.
Right, because people were buying fewer gallons, but was that made up for with the point and a half on the sale?
That's what we don't...
Okay. No, that's, if the Department of Revenue doesn't give us the information, there's no way we could really figure it out. And then, Tim, my last question on the revenue side of this is, how much money do we get? And I know we saw it in a couple of your graphs up here. How much money do we receive from the state of Illinois, from the local government distributive fund, and how important is that to us maintaining our budget?
I believe that number is in there, and I, what page is it on Judy? Right on the first page, right?
Yes, we can see it, slide 13.
Yeah. I want to say it's like...
1.2.
Yeah, 1.2 million.
It's substantial. It's substantial.
I just wanted to bring that to the forefront, because they still are, we have five days left of the General Assembly meeting in Springfield, which is a very dangerous period of time that they're looking to, you know, cut money, cut budgets, to just educate residents very briefly on the fact that they may be looking to take a portion of the money from that fund to help cover their lack of fiscal responsibility, which would be very detrimental to our village if they cut a portion of that.
When do we anticipate the Red Speed being all back online? Is that construction season?
Yeah, there's, you know, I'm hopeful, Mark, sometime this summer. I mean, it's hard to tell when they're really done, but obviously, we hope this summer, as early as possible.
Would it be advantageous for us to talk to Red Speed about establishing, like, First and Roosevelt, another major intersection, one of those?
That would be a council decision as to whether or not you guys want to authorize another red light camera. I'm not sure that the village wants to do that now.
Or if Red Speed's interested.
It has to be authorized by Red Speed and by IDOT.
Oh, that's IDOT too, because it's Roosevelt and First.
About a year for the permit.
Well, maybe for next year's budget, we take a look at that intersection.
Actually, I think the only locations where Red Speed installs their cameras are IDOT-controlled right-of-ways.
Perhaps we should take a look at a gear down the road for the First and Roosevelt.
They may have looked at it already.
It's a high-speed intersection, you know, with two intersections there like that. Could be beneficial. Can't turn around that fast, though, but could be something for next year.
Well, we'd only be able to get one corner.
Mr. Mayor, Red Speed does do non-state road intersections as well. They actually do a traffic study before doing any type of work, and they actually issue a report based on, you know, traffic, people blowing red lights, illegal right-hand turns, things of that nature.
Okay.
With the high school there, could be, you know, help increase safety.
All right. We're still on revenue questions?
One last one. This may be a better question for a strategic meeting, but just to throw it out there. Have we ever done any kind of study on extending one of our great businesses in this town, bars, their operation hours, say, on Saturday to 4:00 a.m., an extra hour of sales? I know there's ramifications that I'm sure Chief Ryan would have to weigh in on, but we're talking about a great source of income and what that could bring? Has it ever been discussed?
We haven't.
Mark, you'd have some inside info on that?
You scared me just by saying it.
Really?
Yeah, but...
I mean, there's...
That's a different hat I wear, so.
Nearby...
From a council point, if you could come up with a revenue that you thought would be worth it, but what you get with... You know, the first thing that went through my head is, you get everybody racing from communities that closed down earlier, such as Berwyn, North Riverside, Oak Park, trying to beat that time to come into Forest Park and finish?
I think we're open later than them to begin with. We have surrounding areas in Riverside...
But if you pick up the later times like they do in the unincorporated Cook County, where I operate a tavern in Hillside, which isn't too far from the two Cook County ones, Galways and Edens, there is a mass exodus among those times, and we also get a mass exodus out of DuPage coming back into Cook County. I would worry what the traffic-related situations would become because of that. You know, it's nice to have Forest Park as a destiny to start. I wouldn't want people coming to finish.
I think, just saying that 3:00 a.m. is already later than most, which is 2:00 a.m. You're already here for the 3:00 a.m. If extending it just maybe, say, Saturdays to 4:00 a.m., you're, I don't think you're drawing that much from outside, because we are 3:00 a.m. compared to most, most are 2:00 a.m.
And would your interest be for revenue enhancements for the village?
Well, you're talking about another hour of sales. Sure. I mean, that's, that's your, Saturday nights, those are your heavy bar times. I'm not talking about Tuesday extending it an hour, but you're definitely increasing your sales. Our owners have told me this, and I don't think it's a horrible thing to consider.
Most municipalities that had those types of hours have all cut them back.
Okay. I'm still saying...
Are you aware of any municipalities that still have 4 o'clock licenses?
Is that unincorporated Cook down Displanes? Is that Riverside? Or there's one, I don't know the names of them. I don't frequent them necessarily.
The ones across from the country club there? That's North Riverside. I'm not sure what their closing times are.
They're, I believe they're 4:00 a.m. And then obviously, there's Stone Park that's in a different world.
Yeah, Stone Park cut their hours back.
And I know the county's been talking about trying to cut back with their, like, Galways and Edens.
Yeah, I don't know if they have yet.
You're the first person I've ever seen in government asked to expand liquor hours.
I don't want to ask...
And a loss.
Hey, as opposed to asking people to pay $10 more for their vehicle sticker? I'm all for it.
Yeah.
I kind of prefaced it with that, but I...
All right. Any other questions on the revenue worksheets? If not, we'll move on to tab 2.
Your honor.
Commissioner Housley.
I'm just reading through and going through kind of the history on one of our line items, community organizations. We've, in the past, supported a Chamber of Commerce at a higher level, and it's my opinion that number should go back up for the amount of advertising and promotion the village gets from the chamber. The chamber is a great resource for people looking for information about Forest Park, for promotion of the business community and the residential community of Forest Park. They're, they're one of the two sources. There's Village Hall, and there's the Chamber of Commerce. And as we all know, it's the broken record...
for promotion of the business community and the residential community of Forest Park. They're one of the two sources. There's Village Hall and there's the Chamber of Commerce. And as we all know, it's the broken record. It's been a tough couple of years in the business community, and some of the funding has decreased from the business community. I think we have an opportunity to, at the forefront, we're going to be coming back a little faster than the business community, because we move at larger numbers and we cut ourselves to the bone on sales. If there is an increase in this year, I think it would be smart for us to invest in the community organizations, to promote the village, to bring more business to the village, to bring more business is to the village, even if it's a one-year hiccup for the promotion. My recommendation would be move that number from 6,100 to 10 even. And I know there's other organizations besides the chamber on that line item, just so that's known. It's not the only one on there.
Now, can I do a, you know, if we were to do that, can I do a swap and not have to pay for the porta-potties? You know, that cost is about $4,000, $4,000 a year.
I'm just talking about, you know, increased promotion of the community. Just putting it out there, Your Honor.
How do the other commissioners feel?
It's a $39,000 increase, and actually, I'm looking at a separate line item, PA 7, where we spend $3,000 per year in posting video meetings, which I think can be readily accomplished using a multitude of free services. YouTube just announced today they get three, I think it's 3 billion views a day on videos. There's other video services that allow you to post high-definition videos. There's a service called Vimeo, and it's, I think it's $54 per year that can allow anyone to upload a video in high-def, process-immediately, embedded on your website, that would cost the village substantially less than $3,000 to post web videos. I'm pretty sure most of the people in the room have posted some type of an online video, and I just think that the $3,000, you know, I support the chamber, and I would agree with Commissioner Hoste that we should better fund them since they help promote the village so well, is what about an opportunity to cut that $3,000 figure down and use that to help finance Commissioner Hoste's idea of bringing our Chamber of Commerce funding back up?
That doesn't include the cost of...
Maybe, but I'm at a disadvantage without having Sally here. Tim's probably likewise. Something tells me within there, what happens is, the gentleman filming the meetings here, we pay him, and then he ends up providing us with a tape, which we give to our technical guy that really maintains our website. So are you telling me that we can still have, because this is Comcast, so we're gonna have Comcast continue to tape our meetings?
Yeah, I've worked with Comcast on my, putting on my professional hat, I've worked with Comcast quite a bit, and they will turn over to a DVD, a digital version of anything that they tape, that you could take and upload to a YouTuber, a Vimeo, for example.
Okay, so then we upload it to YouTube. How do we get it on our website?
There's several different ways you could do it. Do a direct link to the actual video, to the channel, to the YouTuber Vimeo channel itself, or actually physically embed the video directly, your most current video directly into the website. So you can have your most current one right there with links to your channel and other videos posted directly underneath that. So every time you post a new video, it just basically gets converted to a link and moves down the list.
And YouTube continues to archive those indefinitely?
Well, we would have an archive, because Comcast would turn those over to us, because we would take possession of them, that we would keep at Village Hall. So we would always have a digital archive.
But theoretically, you can go, you know, a year from now, I want to take a look at the May 25th meeting.
Yes.
And that'd be out there on YouTube.
Absolutely. Right. Again, you know, YouTube is, you know, too big to fail, potentially, where unless they go under or some such, but there's enough, there's so many other services out there trying to compete against YouTube right now, and YouTube's actually part of Google, which is a multi-billion dollar corporation. I find it hard to believe that they would all of a sudden just decide to fold the tent and get away from their online video. So going back to the point, I think that that could be an opportunity to take a $3,000 line item off of something that we can, you know, basically cut or do for free, and use it to help further promote the village and further promote, you know, help the Chamber of Commerce drive more traffic and more shoppers and diners to the village.
Do we know that that $3,000 is for posting, not...
It says posting video meetings, $3,000.
That's not taping and posting, or...
No, the taking is in the community relations on the PA 12.
Yeah, I think that this most likely are fees associated with the technical person that maintains our website for getting that video, whatever he has to do to get the video to show up on our website.
I'd agree, $3,000 seems a bit hefty. I'll post it for $3,000 here.
You know, that's all well and good, you know, as an elected official, but the problem is, you know, we can't, none of us can guarantee that in four years, right, that you get reelected and still willing to do it for free, right? That's why unfortunately we have to pay, like any other enterprise, you know, for some of these services.
Your Honor, that brings me to another point. Were we praying over there? It comes down to our technology. And currently, and here's where I'm gonna bridge this, I believe Tom could train an employee who we are showing, from my conversations with Sally, she puts into our council packets about four hours a week, or every two weeks assembling them, at roughly cost of, between printing costs, ink, and her hourly runs about $288, or not hourly, she's salaried, but I had her break it out for me, about $288 to assemble the paper packages. It is my recommendation to increase our technology line to take us to a green production. I believe with a small investment on the village's side, we could make this council electronic. We could have all of this posted electronically to the commissioners with a tab. I've spoken a number of times with Tom, who's much better at technology than I am, about agendas. This, as Judy, how many times did you change this in the last week, the document we're looking at?
Once, Ken.
That would be a stroke of a key, and the last final prepared document that you looked at today when somebody said, "You missed a zero here, you have to carry a three here," could be electronically in every commissioner's hands, thus freeing up so much time from Sally that if it took her a half hour to upload the video onto YouTube, that time could be absorbed into her job. I don't want to keep giving out more work to her, but I think from our conversations, Sally's in my conversation, she gave me a whole bunch of information on it. It's very interesting how some other communities have done it, and how she broke out what it costs her. I am proposing to put a $8,000 increase into the technology line for this year and look at expanding into an electronic format for the board. And I'm telling you, like I said, this document that we're looking at tonight could be set to a spreadsheet in electronic form that we'd be looking at tonight, that would be seamless from Judy's last entrance at 5 after 6, which is what I think she was doing tonight on her way down here. So again, that's, might be a strategic planning, or it's a budget item, but I would like to increase your line item under your department by, what'd I say, $8,000.
Can you elaborate on that? Is that, you want to give everyone a iPad or laptop?
I'd like to take a look at going with an iPad.
Okay.
An iPad service, it would be with Wi-Fi service down here. It would allow us to have up-to-the-minute, last agenda items. We'd be able to go into archive minutes, because we have them on our website already. If you'd like, I could forward this on to you. There's other communities like Warrenville that are using it electronically. It's very interesting, and the impact in the first year, by my calculations, would save us $6,900, over $6,900. It's effect on the environment for the waste of paper and the ability to be a seamless transition with like the financial reports for things like tonight, it would be amazing. And after talking with Sally, there would be an ability, if somebody wanted to bring their laptop, they would be able to follow along the meeting with us off of our website. So I don't know if you guys heard about this word in government, it's becoming very popular, it's called transparency. It would make us extremely transparent for anybody who came in.
It's a buzzword.
What's that?
Heard it's a buzzword.
I believe it might be, but, you know, you could work off your smartphone. There's a number of issues, if we made this a hotspot down here, where the community would be able to go right along with the meetings, the agendas. It would have, you know, tab releases that would put you deeper into the supporting documentation.
Commissioner, I support that idea. Question, though, are we married to actually doing it via iPad or iPad 2, or are we going to look and make sure that we cover all of our bases? Because there's essentially two moving parts to this transition. The moving part, one is the actual hardware component, making sure the hardware's gonna be, you know, doing what we need it to do. The screen's big enough, it's a typeable face, et cetera, et cetera. But then also, more importantly, is the development cost of an application. If it's on the Android system, it may be, you know, very difficult to get an agenda app to work, or there may be one that's free, versus an Apple Store where they may have one, or they may not have one. Where I think that there's two different moving parts to this that we have to do our due diligence on, to make sure that we're gonna move in the right direction, because this has a very clear, it's about a 13-month, 14-month payback on this type of an investment, which I fully support, but just make sure that we do it right the first time.
I would agree. And there are access apps, and we would pick the right format and work with it prior to implementing the hardware, to make sure it's the right proper equipment. But there are a number of supporting apps that would work at it. It's almost like an interface accounting app-type idea. They exist.
We've got a couple of different proposals kind of on the table, if you will. You know, one is, you know, up in the donation to the Chamber of Commerce, and I don't know if that's been fully settled. And then we have this other one on increasing the IT budget for potential acquisitions of iPads. So let's go back to the Chamber of Commerce.
There was a third one, too.
The website posting video?
Website posting.
Back to the chamber?
Let's go back to the chamber first.
On the breakout sheet, it just has a generic $4,000. What, where's that $4,000? Is that advertising? What is it, what are we, what's it spent on?
We make a direct donation.
Oh, just a straight donation?
Just a straight donation to the Chamber of Commerce.
So it'd be a straight $10,000?
No, it wouldn't be 10, it would...
Take out the Little League money and whatnot, so it's $7,100 donation.
79.
79?
39 plus 4.
Correct. That's why you're accounts and finance.
Finally, recognize it.
How by, we want to increase it by how much?
It was rounding line item number 14 to 10,000.
Is there any objections to that recommendation?
Mayor?
Commissioner Hoskins.
We support Little League. Is this an ongoing line? I don't remember from last year.
It's been in every year, Commissioner.
Why support Little League and not support, say, soccer?
I'm sorry...
I was saying, why would we support Little League and not support the soccer program?
Little League has asked us, soccer hasn't.
Okay.
That's, I mean, Little League's been around a long time, and they've always, they've made those requests. We've never had a request from soccer.
Yeah, I know there are a lot of intangibles to government, and I'm not against supporting Little League, I think they do good things. Yeah, I'm wondering if soccer knows that they could approach the village, and if they did, would the council be willing to fund their programs as well?
I don't think it's really our job to try to figure out who should solicit more money from us. If we're approached, I guess it's...
I was speaking to the mayor. Mayor, would you be open to it?
I thought this was an open discussion. I didn't know we had to address only one person.
Mayor, would you be open to supporting soccer if they came to you?
You know, if they presented a proposal, absolutely. All right, so I'm not hearing any objections to increasing line item 14 to make it a grand total of 10,000. So we'll move in that direction. We'll jump then to increasing the IT budget by $8,000 for the purpose of acquiring some type of technology to go green for the elected officials. Is there any objections to that recommendation?
Mark, are we gonna see some sort of example before?
Yeah.
I don't want to see scanned PDFs on a, you know, that's so, yeah, that's 1990 technology there.
I feel confident that we definitely, that we definitely will. You know, I've kind of had a spirited debate with some of the staff, you know, about going to this technology, which I fully support, but I too think that, I don't care what we would go to, there are times that I think reviewing some documents are gonna be challenging.
Right.
Absolutely. I don't know that, you know, when it comes time, for instance, where we have a ZBA matter that's 25 pages long, that, give me a laptop or an iPad, I don't know if I want to be scrolling or next page, next page, next page, or if I just want to look at, you know, a printed copy. So there are gonna be some challenges, most likely some learning curves. You know, outside of iPads, I don't know what other technology is out there right now, you know, that could do it.
There's a host of tablets out there, I think Tom mentioned.
How many tablets we got out there on the market?
Quite a few.
Just quite a few.
Quite a few.
Okay. And different kids.
We should actually, in the scope of actually researching this, we may actually want to talk to, actually, the state of Illinois, surprisingly, down in Springfield, actually does something very well when it comes to using technology for members of the General Assembly, where everyone is on a shared network, that they actually, the agenda gets automatically updated on their laptops every time the chair moves to the next bill. So that may be worth just a phone call down to Springfield to look and see what technology they use to do that, and see if we could, you know, learn from what they've learned and implement it here.
Right, but they're working on laptops.
Yes.
The legislators are.
Yes, they are.
And of course, those, I'm very familiar with, laptops. These types of things, how many manufacturers are there of these types of things?
A number.
Who's...
There's three different operating systems, and there's probably 15 different manufacturers.
RIM, Motorola's making one, Apple's making one.
Samsung.
Sam, I think, is Nokia, no, they're...
BlackBerry just came out with one, too.
Yeah, the BlackBerry one that they had to recall because it caught on fire.
Right.
Yeah. We shouldn't go with that one.
No, but I feel very certain that we would come back, you know, the elected officials would be a little more involved before we actually pull the trigger on, you know, what type of device we're gonna, we would move towards.
Okay. I don't know if there was some, where you're at research-wise and what you'd see.
No, this is a start point. It's a start point, and, you know, it'll require some time on...
Is the $8,000 gonna be enough?
I took a look just online the other day, a 32-gig, 3G was 700 and change.
iPads.
iPads. And I figured that's kind of the market. And I took a look at, I have the Consumer Reports I can bring in.
Laptops are cheaper than that. You know, you can buy a laptop for 350 bucks, so certainly the 800 per unit would be adequate to cover it.
And on my calculations, I have, you know, because if we're gonna go green, it would have to be all the members up here, so it would be the attorney and the clerk, in addition to the two of us.
My only concern is, I don't see where we would need more than 16 gigs.
I just took a line, and again, I've got the Consumer Reports on all of them.
Oh, understood.
iPad was the name I was using, because they're, the three different issues they've talked about, iPad, it's iPad and then everything else.
We'll work out the actual technical issues, you know, something.
But my number's at a basis, what I'm saying.
So it sounds as though there's no objections then to increasing the IT budget by eight grand? And who's all, Judy, are you making notes of this? And Vanessa?
Didn't that come with a cut?
There was a $3,000 cut we were talking about.
I'm swinging back to that. And at least for myself, I absolutely feel uncomfortable making the decision on cutting that one line item, because I need... And at least for myself, I absolutely feel uncomfortable making the decision on cutting that one line item because I need to find out more what's all involved with that.
Could we get information from staff on that one? Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely, we can find out.
I think at the very least, we could use that $3,000 if we can't cut it outright. Perhaps that would be a good investment in training several of our staff on how to actually implement that so that next fiscal year, we can remove that because we have trained staff that can continuously train new people that come in. It is another possible solution to that.
Maybe, you know, I definitely encourage especially the newly elected officials, come spend a couple of full days, not just, not just periodic, come spend a couple of full days at Village Hall. You know, because we do, we have a thin staff. Pretty much everybody's stretched, you know, because they have, you know, taken on additional responsibilities, especially over the last four, five years. You know, our total headcount is less through attrition. And of course, you know, when you're less headcount, somebody's got to be doing that work, right? So I absolutely encourage you to come and spend ample time here, see who is doing what because they really don't have much extra free time, you know, to take on some of these, you know, added, I'll say quasi-IT responsibilities. They're pretty thin. Not that, not that we wouldn't take a look at it, but. That's why I'm encouraging you to come, spend some time here, you know, and observe and talk to the employees and, you know, see what it is, what they do and how they do it. I'll leave it at that. But we, I've got it highlighted myself because I'm going to find out exactly what that, what that's all about. Any other questions under tab two? How do you guys feel generally about marketing?
It's important.
You know.
Generally?
I've, you know, within a lot of the marketing that we have traditionally done as a village, you know, my office has done that under community, I think, community relations. And, you know, we've, that, that line item's been whacked several times pretty severely.
What number is that?
Well, it's line item 12. It's a PA 11 in the backup. It's a second line item. It's actually under employee relations. And we have both the village Christmas party and then marketing items. You know, I think at one time, just in, you know, in the global picture, you know, marketing.
No, Tony, it's on the next page, it's 25,500. Community relations or employee relations?
No, I had the wrong, I think I may have had the wrong line number.
PA 11 has marketing items.
If you go to PA 11.
Oh, just, okay, that's the number you're talking about.
Yeah. I think at one time, you know, globally for marketing, we were at probably about another, at total about 20, 25,000. But over the last several years, I mean, we've severely cut it.
What's your proposal?
15.
What specifically, marketing wise, are we looking at adding?
Well, I mean, it's pretty broad. You know, they may be printed material, material that we've used to send out to prospective businesses. Could be printed materials that in the past we sent out to new homeowners. Could be items that we've used for some giveaways within the schools, Chamber of Commerce, other special events that, you know, in some way, shape or form promote the village.
Mayor.
Commissioner Oskens.
Chamber of Commerce is kind of included at the bottom of PA 12 under community relations. Would those kinds of trinkets and things that you imagine, I mean, would, not imagine, but would they be part of those costs? You know, giveaways for schools?
Hmm, not on PA 12.
So that'd be like the longevity gifts? The 2500's longevity gifts?
What is marketing to your, in employee relations then? What is that $2,500?
I, both of those justification items, you know, are lumped together in employee relations. I believe the marketing items to be marketing globally, whether it's employees or the business community, residential community, it's global, it's marketing.
I think you're right. I agree with you.
Yeah.
I could see marketing ourselves to outside interests. I'm not sure we need to increase it for, I mean, is that our job to make people aware of the village that they live in? Or I'm not sure the market, I'm not seeing where, we get the newsletter in the mailbox. What other marketing necessarily should we do to residents?
I, certainly I'd have to go back because, I mean, because the line item has been reduced for quite a number of years now. You know, could go back and try and resurrect the various different things that we did do, you know, to articulate it in that detail. I certainly can do that. But that's why I opened it up with saying, how do you guys generally feel about marketing?
Is Groovin' in the Grove marketing?
Uh, yeah, it is.
Okay.
Because we have a separate page for Groovin' in the Grove.
What page number is it?
PA 8.
PA 8. And do you know why that is a separate sheet, Commissioner? You should. You talking about PA 8?
Yes.
Is Groovin' in the Grove?
I'm asking you, is that, do you consider that marketing for the village?
I do. And this cost, this line item is for the production of those three events.
What about the advertisements for those, for the Groovin' in the Grove that, that we do do? Are those included in the 8,000?
Would we charge it to line item, like, yeah? We don't do that much advertising for Groovin' in the Grove. I think just ads in the Forest Park Review.
Post.
Bands are about 1,200 a piece, right? Somewhere around there?
Banners.
Banners, yeah.
So we pay 1,200 per band, ballpark?
Not 1,200 for a banner.
Band.
Band.
Oh, for a band, yeah.
So, you know, outside of band costs.
Production costs as well, though.
Then the rest of it is money that can be used for marketing, right? Maybe radio ads, ads in the paper. So, I mean, some of our marketing activity is concluded in Groovin' in the Grove.
Sure.
Well, at Cruise Nights, where's the marketing for that come from?
Marketing for Cruise Night, actually, we don't take Cruise Night. Do we have anything out of our general, there's. There's nothing out of the general corporate fund for Cruise Night.
So where do we, I see the ads for it and where's the money come from?
From, it sponsors that sponsor Cruise Night. And there's a separate checking account. But I think, are we managing the checking account? Not any, no.
We just have volunteers that.
Yeah.
Some of us work for the village, but we volunteer our time at Cruise Nights.
And so what they have done, because this is only going to be the second year for Cruise Night, Karen may or may not know, you know, just tonight, how much they brought in with sponsorships. But they got quite a few different businesses within the community to make donations to sponsor Cruise Night. And it was that money that was used for advertising. They, whenever Cruise Night was taking place, they had a DJ out there, they had to pay the DJ. This year, they've already bought and purchased some trinkets that they're going to give, you know, the owners of the cars that come out to Cruise Night. But that is, that whole operation is wholly supported and funded outside of the local government.
I could be completely wrong and I'm prefacing with that. I thought I saw a bill paid in this past meeting's approval of the bills for.
For Cruise Night?
Cruise Nights. I thought there was an ad that ran for it in the post. Like I said, I'm thinking that, I could be wrong, I'm saying that with that large preface. Karen, I had a quick, one quick question on Groovin' in the Grove and I'm really, really just asking questions, don't get mad. What is the production cost per night on that, the three times we have to do it?
It depends on the band.
They have.
So we have a band, our first band this year is, is $1,200.
The staging.
Stage is free.
So that, so it's literally 1,200 out, the stage is that mobile stage, you know, thing?
Actually, the stage belongs to the park district, they loan it to us.
So at the most, we're paying $3,600 in bands. So we have that much left to market the event in the $8,000 budget?
We have to buy the liquor, our liquor licenses, we buy all the products that we sell.
That's.
Food items.
Break even or money maker though, isn't that?
Well, hopefully, yes. These are one of those areas where in the past, I'm not being smart or anything, I'm just trying to lay it right on the line. You have to, you have to look at a revenue side to, you know, to understand the whole picture. We have to, besides paying for the bands, we're going to buy alcohol because we sell alcohol there. We also sell some food products, hot dogs, pretzels, popcorn, I don't know, soft drinks. So, you know, we front that money, right?
Well, I was, I was more going to the fact that we're only spending, and I say only, and I still think it's too much, 3,600 on bands. That leaves us a nice chunk of money to spend on marketing. Back to Commissioner Oskens' point of that is marketing the village if we're talking about an event.
You know, that's why I asked you guys at the beginning, how do you feel about marketing generally? Because if, and then I, I mean, myself, I'm going to get off the topic. If you guys are that myopic about marketing, then, you know, there's no point in going any further. You, certainly there's going to be, we're going to have micro-marketing within certain special events that take place. Groovin' in the Grove, Rib Fest. If the police department does National Night Out. If the fire department was to produce some type of special event, whatever that may be, Learn Not to Burn. Of course, you're going to have a little bit of marketing within each of those one individual events. My, my question was, how do you guys feel about marketing, the word I used, globally? Globally, which doesn't mean specifically Groovin' in the Grove. It doesn't mean specifically Rib Fest. It doesn't mean specifically anything other than the promotion of the Village of Forest Park. And then I had questions, what do you mean by that? I offered up some examples of what those might be because it's fluid. You know, we've produced several different printed paraphernalia to market. Anybody that we may think might have an interest in the Village of Forest Park. And we've also done some of that printed paraphernalia with other organizations at the time, like Old Park Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. You know, but they've gone through some change over the last several years. We did a multi-color, it was kind of like a three-folded marketing piece, which was real nice, by the way. So it's things like that. But, you know, when organizations talk about marketing, you know, typically we're not looking at all of the individual minutia of, you know, show me the eight different types of printed materials that you want to have done. I, I'm not accustomed to doing that, but that's why I threw it out there and.
Your Honor, I, I think marketing is something that's fluid that comes up throughout the course of the year. There's going to be marketing opportunities, there's going to be a desire to promote different parts and there are going to be opportunities to send things out on different levels that aren't in our face right now. I would support increasing that by your request of 1,250 to 1,500 so that it's available if the marketing opportunities, because advertising doesn't cost, it pays. You know, I'm willing to put that in there so it's available.
I want to go back to something that was brought up earlier about using a marketing line item to help educate the residents, I think is important. For example, and I don't know if you're familiar with the breakdown of motor fuel tax that we get from gas revenue versus the sales tax portion of it. But there are two separate types of taxes that the state collects on our behalf and pays back to us when someone buys a gallon of gasoline in the village. That's why it's important to educate people, you know, as silly as this may sometimes seem, to tell them it is important for you to buy your gasoline in the Village of Forest Park because that money comes back to the village to help us do things like, you know, fund the streets improvements so we can fix your potholes, things of that nature. To help educate, just to show people that it's important to spend your money locally to support the, A, the businesses that decided to come to Forest Park.
Are you talking about putting a marketing campaign together?
I'm not talking specifically about that, I'm just talking to.
A buy local campaign perhaps?
More specifically about the need to market and educate people.
I would support a buy local, I mean, that could be the perfect first year. Things like that, but that's what I'm saying is, marketing is something that we're not going to know right now. We just have to make a decision as the managers of this budget that we're willing to market Forest Park and look for the opportunities which to market it. And if it's a buy local or, you know, when the Old Park Convention Visitors Bureau, that piece was extremely effective, I saw people coming onto Madison holding it. You know, those opportunities will come up. So the question is, do we support increasing that to 15,000 by 12,500? I for one do.
I, I think that, you know, obviously it's not going to be spent all in one day and obviously, you know, there's going to be ongoing communications about how we're going to market and what we're going to use to market. But I think it's something that we should, you know, put in our budget now so that we have an opportunity over the next fiscal year to have an ongoing discussion about how best to market and promote the village. And I personally would ask, you know, the mayor that every dollar that we do spend on marketing, I would like to see what our short and long-term return on investment of that marketing dollar is to make sure that we're getting a, you know, a good return on that. As Commissioner Housie pointed out, you don't spend money on advertising, you make money on advertising and that we should use that to, you know, promote the village and bring in additional revenue, bring more, bring more shoppers and diners to Madison Street, help out our businesses.
Mayor, I think that we do do a lot of marketing in Forest Park. I think that, you know, going back to PA 12, I know it's under the banner of community relations. But, you know, membership with the WCMC, membership with the Chamber of Commerce, membership with West Suburban Special Recreation, membership with the Provisal Municipal League. And the events that we participated in, in Triton College and with the Progress Center, a lot of those involve marketing Forest Park. I know just because you have a line that says marketing items, it's not as if marketing stops at that line. You know, the work that we do in terms of the newsletter, you know, $15,000 there, that's for the most part educating people about services available at Forest Park and to some extent about businesses located in Forest Park. The farmer's market expenses that the village will outlay, I think it's great that we're going to expand to the Grove. And I think that's Forest Park marketing. I think that it's really intelligent to place the farmer's market in an open area along Madison Street because you have a lot of traffic through there. And I expect that there will be returns, but, you know, we spent. But, you know, we've spent money marketing over the years through all kinds of events, and what we've seen in the last several years is our revenues have steadily declined. And I think we should be cognizant of that when we're looking for ways to add money to the budget, Mayor.
I know, Commissioner, and what we've also seen, and if anybody should know, you should know, despite the declining revenues, we've been able to maintain not only a balanced, but a surplus operating village here. And we're going to see that when, when the auditors finish the audit for this recent ending fiscal year. You know, so the whole notion of the whole declining revenue stuff, you know, that all sounds good, but it doesn't mean anything. If we want to increase business in Forest Park, we have to go out and market ourselves. That's going to require spending some money. That's my proposal. And, you know, if, you know, if there's a majority of those sitting up here that are in favor of that, that's a direction that we're going to go.
One last comment, Mayor?
Sure.
Since everyone's put on their professional hat, I work in marketing and work on people's fiscal years. They know, I'm, I'm very hesitant without any kind of plan. People come to me and know their next six months of what they're going to do. We're saying, hey, we should throw some money at marketing. I wouldn't have a living if it wasn't for marketing, so I'm-
What do you recommend to them?
They usually have a plan for the first six months.
You consult for them, for the marketing?
No, they know what they want to do, and I tell them how to do it.
Okay.
So, but they have an idea of what they want to do, we really don't have an idea of what we want to do. If we had an idea, if someone said, even, we just went back and forth here and said a buy local campaign, if someone said, hey, we should put that together, I'd say, okay, and I would tell them how much that would cost. We really don't, we just have, let's put some money for it, and I have a hard time.
But with government, it's reversed. You can't plan it until you fund it.
Yeah.
But if we had an idea, like, we just, we just sat up here and we started on Tom's riff and it turned into a buy local thing. If that, if someone, and we all kind of, that was a good idea, but if that was the idea, then I could say, hey, we have an idea, we're, let's, let's put that in play, but-
Okay, so I want to increase my marketing light on to do a buy local campaign, are you going to say yes, then?
And then I, then I would say, let's put a plan together, and I'll tell you exactly how much that would cost, but-
Okay.
I mean, if you're telling me for, let's, if that was the plan, but we're sitting up here saying we should increase our marketing, that just seems-
Well, at this point, that's what I am doing. And what I'm going to do is, because we don't take any official voting, but I'm going to look just for a little poll here, and if there's a majority that says yes, that's what we are doing, with or without a plan. Because it is time to move on, we're spending a little bit too much time on just this one request for marketing.
Well, since we have obvious support for a buy local initiative, is that going to be enough in our marketing budget? Or do we want to make sure that if, you know, when we put a plan together for marketing, you know, knowing that moving forward, that this is not an end-all, be-all document? I mean, you obviously have a very clear dollar figure in the head, and I'm, I'm very happy to see the support for, you know, buy local initiative up here. I think that's a wonderful thing, or maybe it would make sense, you know, as Commissioner Harris pointed out, you know, to use a little bit of money out of that marketing budget to actually fund, putting together a plan for a buy local initiative.
My number is an arbitrary number. You know, it's been pared down and pared down and pared down, that, you know, we, we've just kind of lost sight. Other than the so-called marketing at Groovin' in the Grove and Rib Fest. But it, it's time that we have to start launching the community of Forest Park forward. We've been dragged down, I'm not interested in being dragged down anymore. I'm looking to move this community forward. I'm the elected mayor, I'm making a recommendation, you can either agree or disagree. If you agree, or at least the majority agrees, I'm going to take these dollars, put it to work, and start looking at moving this community forward, it's that simple.
I, I, I'm behind that.
Well, you got a majority.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to move on. So we're open for other questions on tab number two? If we've exhausted that, we're going to move on to tab three, is the Police Department. No questions for the Police Department?
Chief Ryan, are there any marketing activities you'd like to see globally? Okay.
Police Department seems cut to the bone and straightforward.
Chief, just out of just pure curiosity, ammunition costs, I assume that covers our, our target shooting? Okay, just, we didn't fire $13,000 worth of bullets. That was just my, I was just being curious, so that covers target shooting and all the ammunition the guys need, men and women of the force need?
In addition, we do not have a range here, so we have to run through this range.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Accounts and Finance. We spent like about 45 minutes on increase in marketing by a couple of grand, and we whipped through a couple of million-dollar department with basically nothing, huh?
Pretty quick.
Okay, let's go on to Accounts and Finance.
I have a general question.
Sure.
Can there be retroactive questions tomorrow?
Of course.
I got this book at-
Oh, absolutely.
6:02, or, you know, okay. So I might have a question, Chief Ryan, I just don't have it constructed quite yet.
And we certainly, you know, we could, we could also, you know, come back together kind of one more time, you know, after some of these adjustments are made. Of course, we wouldn't have to sit through a presentation again. But by that time, you have a chance to go through all this information, digest it.
I was hoping so.
Which, by the way, especially for the new commissioners, all previous commissioners, when it came budget time, also got this same information. So all this, all this nonsense, you know, some of the nonsense during like campaign time about, you know, we don't, we don't get the information, it's all a bunch of hogwash, because you-
I thought that was pertaining to specifics, like, I didn't see specifics on here on particular breakdowns, that's what I understood it as.
Yeah, but you'll have, you have every single expense item in this three-ring binder, right?
Right, but then the specifics of the expenses need to be broken down sometimes.
And, most often, easily obtainable by, you know, calling the village administrator, might take a day or two, but all previous elected officials have had the same opportunity to get any of that specific information. The question sometimes was they never requested it, but go out there in public and complain about it.
Okay.
No, 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 just-
I didn't bring it up.
No, no, I said, I'm sharing that for the benefit of the newly-elected officials, so that, because I never said those words to previous elected officials. That's why I would be shocked, you know, when they would make statements to the newspaper. Now I know that I'm telling the new elected officials, and, so I won't be shocked if I hear about it in the newspaper, okay? So nothing, nothing on Accounts and Finance?
Just, I guess, one question on the display ads, Community Relations.
Line item?
Yeah, I'm sorry, number 16. It's VC number 16. $500 on display ads, are those newspaper ads?
Yes.
How many ads generally, is that just one ad per year?
We do a couple ads to remind people to buy their vehicle stickers.
Oh, good, so it's a revenue generator, okay. And then, secondly, VC number 31, employment advertising. And again, are both of these ads through which, is it through the Forest Park Review?
No, not necessarily. We don't find that advertising in the newspaper is really advantageous. We post our jobs on the website, on our own website, and the Fire and Police Commission, when they are, you know, doing testing, they usually advertise online. If we're going to hire someone like a professional, we'll do online advertising through, like, what is it? The ICC organization, say if we're going to hire an inspector, because they have a job listing service. Or we can do it through the Managers Associations, or that kind of thing. You get a better, I guess, not a better response, but you get better qualified people.
Okay.
Better fits.
Yeah.
I was just curious, because the pricing, or the cost seemed a little, so I just wanted to question that, but thank you.
It's really, yeah, I mean, this budget used to be a lot more.
Yeah, understood.
We just don't really need it.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to Fire Department, tab five. How about Health and Safety, tab six? How about Streets and Public Improvements, tab seven?
Now we're cooking.
Public Property, tab eight?
Mayor?
Yeah?
I don't know if this is the time, but John and I got together a couple of times, and we've, we've trimmed some things actually on our section. We've made some cuts, I don't know, Judy, should I just give them to you and you can implement, or?
Well, I-
We wrote them all down, John or I can give them to you, unless you want to publicly talk about them.
If you could let us know, because we have to vote on the budget as a whole, or not vote on, but it becomes our working document for the whole village, so we just know where there are ups and downs.
Well, they're all cuts.
Okay.
No ups.
But, so these have not been relayed to Judy, correct? Okay.
No, John and I met last week, and then we met again earlier today and found places to cut-
What do you got?
Certain items. Cut line 13 from 35 to 3,000.
Uniforms?
Which, which budget?
Public Property.
It's, is it at 3,500 right now?
3,500 to 3,000, to 3,000.
From 35 to 3,000.
Oh, okay.
We cut line 14 from 9,000 to 7,000.
What line item was that?
14.
14, okay.
Okay.
We cut line 17 from 45 to 43,000.
From 45 to where?
43.
Okay.
We cut line 25 from 20 to 15,000.
Line 25?
Community Center.
From 20,000 to what?
15,000.
What are you going to cut out in terms of maintenance over there?
Well, John's doing, if you want to.
Is it leaking?
Yeah, yeah, there's been some, some, there's mold up there.
And so we're going to cut that out?
Well, I thought the, I thought the roof stayed in, I thought we had smaller improvements. The ceiling, the ceiling tiles were still in.
Ceiling tiles are still in there, and, you know, we really haven't gone over everything, we're, just the 5,000, I think we can save on small maintenance items, so.
Still going to do the roof, then?
Roof was still on the table the last time we talked.
Yeah, I think the roof's all right, I think the ceiling squares are going to be all right, and I think we should be able to do that with the 15,000.
Commissioner, do you recommend going halfway on that, just?
Is it just in case, you're saying?
Yeah.
John, would you?
Take it to 2,500, I'd hate to see-
So 17,500 instead of 15?
Karen, you had mentioned there was mold.
Yeah, there's some mold, mold going like-
We're going to have to do remediation?
Yeah, we're going to have to do mold remediation, because that could be a serious health hazard that would open the village up to an incredible liability to save $2,500 and get sued for several million from someone getting sick from mold because we didn't fix a roof.
Oh, so no one's been in to look at it?
Well, you know, we're definitely, I'm going to call another meeting, so that we circle back and just go over things kind of finally, so, you know, maybe in the meantime, maybe the three get together and kind of get this handled out.
Maybe take a walk through there.
Okay.
What else you got?
Uh, 26, Public Works, building maintenance down from 20 to 15.
What are you taking out?
There's doors that need to be replaced, John, I think you talked about the number of doors, or what was this?
Correct, we're trying to replace our overhead doors there, they're in pretty bad condition. So we're trying to do a few a year rather than, so I think in rather, instead of four, we go three, they're about $3,000. We did one this year, and they're pretty, you know, they're pretty nice.
Okay, what else?
Uh, line 36 from 1,000 to 500.
36.
Supplies and car wash.
What are you taking that down to?
500. Line 37, knock another 500, that's 5,500 to 5,000. Line 45 from 9,000 to 7,000.
We're going to cut back planting trees?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, we'll still do the same on the trees, but we should be able to do it, the last couple of years has been coming under a little bit. So I think we can get the 40 trees we plant every year for 7,000.
Okay.
That's what we had so far, and I really want to commend John. I was kind of on top of him, and he came up with some, some cuts, and I think he did a great job.
All right, good.
On the 36, the supplies and car washes, I know that line item's in yours, but I think it's for the maintenance of other department vehicles, isn't it?
I, I think so, I'm not exactly sure what vehicles are in there.
I would hesitate, if we spent 723 to undercut that by 223, if it's taken care of, squad cars, ambulances, community center vehicles.
Is car wash the most important thing in the world? Or is it 723 we're talking about, bringing it down to 500? We're asking for 1,000, do you want, do you want to go 750?
I wouldn't want to go under what we're already doing, I mean, it's maintenance to maintain our vehicles. Soil comes off of those, they rust less.
It's much cheaper to wash the vehicle from, get rock salt off of it than it is to replace fenders or vehicles because of rock salt. And it's-
Would you be happy with 750, is it weird, 723?
I'd hate to go under what we're at already, so 750, I think it's decent compromise.
What line is that?
That was the-
36.
36.
And to do busy work if there's nothing to do at double time. I'm suggesting that possibly we replace this with a local person and have them on call for major emergencies, instead of having to drive in and just be there in case something goes wrong. He's not under, his contract has been up, and I think this would be the time to not get rid of the job, but replace him with a local person. I think we take that $18,000 we pay in overtime and really slice it down.
You want to terminate, you want to terminate the employee?
I would give him the option to be on call, but he lives, he lives in McCook from what I understand. Of course, that's even farther, sorry, McCook would be much closer. But we have a guy, it makes no sense, sometimes, I'm sorry, that termination is a horrible word and a horrible thing to do to the gentleman, but to come here and sit here at double time, just as a just in case?
Are we talking about when it snows, or?
The conversation was about snowstorms.
Okay.
The overtime on George's, snowstorms came up in our conversation. And I explained to him that it's so high because sometimes when it snows, George is here 24 hours a day because of breakdowns. And that was the concern, that's how that came up.
But so, you know, if, if we hired another employee, if they were a union, how do we avoid the, the double time?
Well, it's a two-hour minimum if he's called in, from what I understand. So a two hours versus sitting here all night, waiting for something to happen. As, you're talking, he makes 60,000 a year, a third of it, and he makes another third in overtime.
And is he truly like just sitting, waiting for something to happen?
I said it keeps busy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I explained that to Mr. Harris, he doesn't sit there, he stays busy, and most snowstorms are something broke at all times. When there is nothing done, he does do some busy work, like plowing our lot, I explain that, all our parking spots, you know, we're on the streets, so he takes care of stuff around there.
I definitely would also encourage, especially the newly-elected officials, come this winter, go spend a little time down at the, at the Public Works during a couple of the snowfalls, you know, kind of get a firsthand feel for what goes on down there. Because this type- Because this type, that type of picture is very misleading. You know, it kinda portrays a picture as if, you know, guy's getting just a bunch of extra money for really doing nothing, and that's not the case.
Well, I, no, I wasn't saying that. I'm saying we could-
Well, you came pretty close to saying that.
No, I didn't say that his feet kicked up and he was watching TV. As, as John said, he's always got something to do, but he wouldn't have to do it at fifty-two dollars an hour, or fifty-four dollars an hour, instead of twenty-seven dollars an hour.
Well, no, if we got somebody else, how do we get it cheaper?
You have a local guy that gets called in on a need basis.
Then he moves.
Hmm?
Then he can move.
Who?
Whoever he is might move.
But then-
It's not required, you could make requirement for one person out of the entire village staff to live in Forest Park. Is the only person with residency requirement?
I didn't say I have to have a residency. He can live in Oak Park, he can live in Maywood, but I don't think, if you have a job where you have to be on call, you should live fairly close if you want to.
I think what we need to do first is to research whether or not, you know, there could be a proper summarily dismissal of an employee because they happen to live far away, because that's really what you're talking about.
Well, you know, I would say you give him the option to be on call, but we're saying he lives in Morris.
No, he doesn't live in Morris. It's not Morris.
Right, somewhere far south, Joliet area, somewhere out that way. I-
Talking about an hour to get here. If they didn't put a storm on that, you're talking two hours to get here.
Well, give him the option of being on call, rather than, than being housed in the shop, right?
Being housed in the shop for the entire duration of the possible emergency or emergency. Right.
And, and, okay, and so what if he says no? What are you proposing then?
You want me to say that I would terminate him is what you want me to say, but I'm giving him all the options to stay on the job.
Okay. And be on call, meaning, so when it does snow, we're gonna wait until the blade breaks on the snowplow, our guy pulls the truck in and says, "My blade is broken. We gotta call the guy that's on call."
Sure.
To come in, and, okay.
If he lives in Maywood, lives in River Forest.
No, it's intriguing.
That's fifteen minutes.
Yeah. It's intriguing. By any chance, you know any other place that operates under that kind of a format?
In the private world or in the bloated public world?
Both.
Private world, sure.
Okay. For fleet maintenance?
Well, any, specifically, if there was a, I mean, take it into any avenue, sure, and business in general.
Yeah.
A dentist is on call. If you have an emergency, would you call your dentist? Is he gonna, yeah, you're gonna get charged more for him to come in, but I'm talking about, why aren't we looking at saving dollars instead of trying to make a case for him to stay in that capacity at eighteen thousand dollars a year?
Anybody else supporting this notion here?
I applaud Commissioner Harris for trying to make some cuts.
Did you say you supported Commissioner Harris?
I applaud him for making cuts in his department.
Besides vague statements, I just think that's, that's very short-sighted.
I think that's long-sighted, Commissioner.
You're taking his whole year's overtime and placing it on a couple of snowstorms where he did earn a larger portion because of the snowstorms, but we have a number of vehicles that break down, hydraulics blow out with cold temperatures, conveyor belts stop working on the salt. It's not something you can have a downtime for a call-in. I see that as a management decision for John to say, "Hey, I want this guy around, and if he's changing oil on a couple squad cars in between hydraulic pumps and other things that need welding, so be it," but that's a management issue. I, I see no reason to even discuss terminating an employee because their choice of where they live. If the management has decided it's proper to have him around because of our, the antiquated equipment that we tend to run with and keeping the streets moving, then that's a management decision. I, I think to even discuss terminating an employee for this is just wrong.
Again, I didn't say terminate him. I said, "Let's make this a leaner operation."
I think there's always value in looking at opportunities to cut money from the budget, Commissioner, and I do commend you, I kinda what you proposed here, I do, after you were done, I had one more question about one line item in your budget. I know many, many municipalities that have run into similar issues when it pertains to employee residency issues, and it opens up the village to a tremendous liability. Obviously, you know, our hands are kind of tied just because of a number of different employment factors, but I would defer to, you know, on an as-needed basis, we knew many, many days in advance this past year that we were gonna get twenty-four inches of snow, and possibly it could be a circumstance where, we knew we were gonna get any day with snow, it was gonna be heavy snow, it was gonna be deep snow, so, so, you know, John Doss said, "We should have someone here to make sure that our equipment keeps running, because it's going to be such a heavy snowfall, we have to keep the mains open," and it sounds to me like that was a management decision, you know, and unfortunately, that was an expensive decision. With the same token, there are other judgment calls where, you know, and I don't know the answer to this, if we're expected to get three to six inches of snow, it's probably not as necessary to be running, you know, two twelve-hour shifts and have the maintenance team, the fleet services, on call twenty-four-seven, actually at the garage. So, again, I think that that's a management decision, and I wouldn't wanna be on the receiving end of, of, you know, someone upset over the fact that, you know, two or three of our snowplows are sitting in the garage, you know, not working for whatever reason, because we're waiting for the maintenance man that we said, "You have to be on call," that decided, you know, instead of being on call, that he's going out and, you know, he decided to go to Oak Brook for dinner and got stuck out there or some such thing. There are so many different dynamics, and again, I don't know what the right answer to this is. I think that we need to be cognizant of cost savings, absolutely, and I believe that his contract is currently being negotiated, so maybe that's something that we could, you know, have a discussion with him about, about facilitating, saving us money, and I think that, you know, knowing him, he would probably be open to at least having that discussion. How many vehicles is he responsible for maintaining, you know?
Fifteen?
Uh-
Or fifteen within the Public Works.
Yeah, he's like about a hundred and fifty.
Does he?
There's about a hundred and fifty vehicles he maintains throughout the village.
I just, I wanted to see if the Commissioner had any awareness of that.
Oh, is this a quiz show, Mayor?
Little bit, absolutely.
Fine, let's go.
Yeah. Just wanted to see if you had a familiarity with that.
I'm pretty sure that he's not gonna get called in for one of the basic vehicles breaking down in the middle of the night to come and work double time for, though, so that's my point.
Right. Mostly overtime is incurred during the snow season.
When he's here just to be here.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why, why there's resistance to try to save money. I think maybe we should all look at our budgets and make some cuts.
Commissioner, it's very easy to save money. Very easy to save money. I've, I've cuts, I've made cuts in the past without even getting any accolades, you know. You know, nobody gave me credit for cutting line items in the budget. It's very easy to cut. I can easily do that in my departments, very easily. You know what I do? I go there and say, "Cut this." It's that simple.
I didn't simply go, go there, obviously, this wasn't a cut. I had a discussion about it. I wanted to discuss it with everybody. I had a discussion with John about other areas, and John, like I said, was very helpful in coming up with cuts.
John, do you support, you know, this concept of, you know, being on call?
No, I enjoy George being down there. I mean, it makes my mind at ease knowing he's there to take care of any problems.
Okay, so, actually, Commissioner, it's really not just quiz time, but it is like, you know, putting the cards on the table. Yes, maybe you just didn't go there and cut. Yes, you had some conversations with John, but as, that's why I asked John if he's supporting it, because, you know, I wanna know his opinion, so it wasn't as if you went to the department head and said, "Hey, help me find some ways to cut some money. It's easy, and I can do the same thing. Go to my department heads and say just, 'I don't care what you do, cut ten percent, period.' I don't care if it undermines the organization. I don't care if it leads to less services, because we can't have equipment on the street, just do it." There's a difference there. There's a difference between giving that kind of direction or interacting with your department head and saying, "I'd like to make some cuts. Help me find ways where we can do that."
That's exactly what I did.
Without set-
John, did I go to you and say, "Make these cuts"?
No, the only thing you asked me about was the cuts we made, line items. Those are the cuts I came up with.
But I'm asking about this overtime with the mechanic.
If you'll notice, I did not say it was a cut. I wanted to discuss it. I didn't come and say, "We're cutting this. Let's get rid of them. Let's terminate." I wanted to put it on the table as a way to save money. John did not suggest making that cut. I wanted to talk about it. A guy that makes sixty thousand dollars a year, making another eighteen thousand dollars in overtime, is there a better way to do this?
Do you support this idea?
No, I already, I said no. I'd like to have George there.
I'm like, I'm confused now. I mean, I don't-
Mr. Mayor, as the Commissioner of Streets and Public Improvements, that, when the equipment breaks down, that will reflect directly on, on my department and what I oversee, and Commissioner Harris, with all due respect, and I appreciate what you're doing in trying to, you know, cut your budget, and I certainly commend you for that, he's not gonna receive the phone calls, is why the ambulance can't get through the streets to the hospital. He's not gonna get the phone calls of, "Why hasn't my alley been plowed? When am I gonna be able to get out of my garage?" He's not gonna be able, he doesn't have to take the calls, "Why is the, you know, why aren't the plows running? I haven't seen one for two hours." That's gonna fall on my department, and as much as we must take every opportunity to cut and save money, fleet maintenance is, again, this is one of those things where it's an investment, and I believe that snow removal is a core function of a village, of a municipality, and that goes directly to the heart of one of our, what I believe to be, core services. And, you know, while I'm certainly open to discussing, discussing other ways that we could try and reduce that overhead, reduce that cost, I'm gonna defer to, you know, Mr. Doss, who's there on an ongoing daily basis overseeing the department, who obviously runs a very clean ship, a very tight department over there, I'm gonna defer to him on what he thinks is best, not only for the department, but for all the residents of the village, and I think that there is an expectation there, that if we're getting twenty-four, twenty-eight, thirty-two inches of snow, that our plows are gonna be operating out on the street, removing the snow, and if that, if saving twenty thousand dollars puts that at risk, I don't see how we could support that. If we're interested in saving twenty thousand dollars, I will gladly sit down with you, Commissioner, and we will find another twenty thousand dollars someplace else in the budget that we can absolutely-
Then I'd say, let's say forty.
Great, let's sit down. But we can absolutely do, and my suggestion is, is I noticed that you made some cuts, and I may have missed this, but line item fifty-three on the dog park expense, last year we spent, or our projection was thirteen hundred. We still have five thousand dollars budgeted, so that could be a thirty-
It's just for wood chips.
That's because, no, that's because of the possible dog park expansion project over at the Altman.
I would recommend that we remove that and put it down at our projected budget.
If this is the budget time to say it, I am absolutely not in favor of a second dog park.
I'm not in favor of that second dog park.
It's not our core services. I mean, you're looking at cutting a guy who keeps the plows on the street, but you wanna make another dog park in an area that we have for sale?
And this was something that was done before I took the seat. This was a, put in motion long before I got here.
I got a proposal for a thirty-five hundred dollar cut on that line. I have absolutely no interest in another dog park when we're proposing to sell the piece of property right now.
And the other question that I had for your budget is, I don't see any money in here, and maybe Mr. Doss can help us, with the gazebo that's being built. My understanding is that it's not yet complete, and is there gonna be additional maintenance costs associated with that? I hear that the structural integrity of the gazebo is suspect at best.
You'd be correct.
I'm just wondering where we're at with that and why we don't see any type of line item in this budget to either remove a non-functioning piece of public property or-
Recent developments, maybe John can comment on that?
Bring it up to compliance.
We've been working with the company we bought the gazebo from. We have some new supports coming. They're overnighted. They should be here tomorrow, so we're hoping by the end of the week that this works. That's where we're at with the gazebo.
And it's not open currently, right, so?
It's closed.
Nobody's sitting underneath it?
No.
So, the dog park expense, item fifty-three, is that for circle and lemur, or is this globally?
Globally.
So, also for work at Altonheim?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't support that either, myself.
Not, I'm in favor of taking thirty-five hundred right off that line.
And that can go right to the-
You know, I didn't look at the-
The five thousand total was thirteen hundred used last year, so leave it at fifteen hundred.
And we can count that towards the forty thousand that Commissioner Harris and I are gonna figure out where, where we can reduce on other line items. Twenty out of years, twenty out of mine.
Thirty-six, five. And by the way, for those keeping tabs at home, we are down to a increase total of thirty-one hundred and fifty dollars total with all of our changes. Smile, I like that smile, Judy.
Oh, that includes all these line items from public property?
I'm that good.
Okay, any other questions on public property?
I have one more comment.
Sure.
Really, Judy, yawn? Am I that boring?
We have a standard that our gas comes from Moore, outside of Moore being a recognized, respected name in Forest Park. I talked with, with John about opening that up to bidding and not just having it be Moore because they're Moore, and we have never really done that in the past.
Is there any objections to that?
I have no objection.
So, John, I'd say pursue the calls you get and let's see if we can get that down.
I do advocate, and, and, you know, as, as situations arise, I absolutely will look for at least the majority of this village council to positively support Forest Park businesses, up to and including, up to and including even on a bid process.
I agree.
Going five or ten percent, even if they're five or ten percent higher, during a bid process, supporting local business.
I would definitely give Moore the opportunity to match whatever quote we get, even five-
Commissioner, you weren't listening.
Five percent higher is what you're saying?
Absolutely, yeah.
I would definitely support them being able to match.
Yeah. And what I'm gonna do, if and when, you know, any situation like this presents itself, I'm gonna come to the village council and, and, you know, look to enact legislation that anytime we go for any bidding, that if there is a local vendor that bids on it, and they, and they can be up to five or ten percent, we would, whatever the majority says, higher than the lowest bidder, but they would still get the product, we would buy the product or service, whatever it is, even paying five or ten percent more than the lowest bidder because it's a local business. I'm gonna come to the council, whatever the majority decides, it's a direction that we're gonna go.
All right, Commissioner, just in regards to any, if we're gonna actually craft formal requests for proposal, requests for bits, the one stipulation I would ask for is, is I've already talked with Mr. Doss about pricing out and potentially securing biodiesel converter for Public Works vehicles to convert fryer grease, vegetable grease, basically recycle, recycle things from our local restaurants and businesses into diesel fuel at a very, very reduced cost. It's green technology, saves the village quite a bit of money. The technology's really come a long way in the last couple of years. Just so whatever, you know, and I know you'll have to bring any contract back, back in front of us, just make sure that that's a stipulation within the actual RFP.
I would definitely give Moore the opportunity to match whatever quote we get, even five-
Commissioner, you weren't listening.
Five percent higher is what you're saying?
Absolutely, yeah.
I would definitely support them being able to match.
Yeah. And what I'm gonna do, if and when, you know, any situation like this presents itself, I'm gonna come to the village council and, and, you know, look to enact legislation that anytime we go for any bidding, that if there is a local vendor that bids on it, and they, and they can be up to five or ten percent, we would, whatever the majority says, higher than the lowest bidder, but they would still get the product, we would buy the product or service, whatever it is, even paying five or ten percent more than the lowest bidder because it's a local business. I'm gonna come to the council, whatever the majority decides, it's a direction that we're gonna go.
All right, Commissioner, just in regards to any, if we're gonna actually craft formal requests for proposal, requests for bits, the one stipulation I would ask for is, is I've already talked with Mr. Doss about pricing out and potentially securing biodiesel converter for Public Works vehicles to convert fryer grease, vegetable grease, basically recycle, recycle things from our local restaurants and businesses into diesel fuel at a very, very reduced cost. It's green technology, saves the village quite a bit of money. The technology's really come a long way in the last couple of years. Just so whatever, you know, and I know you'll have to bring any contract back, back in front of us, just make sure that that's a stipulation within the actual RFP.
Interesting.
I think they've got a natural, or biodiesel converter in Oak Park. I'm not sure if I mentioned-
Yeah, you had mentioned that to me to go take a look.
I think part of the new Oak Park Public Works, they have a converter. No need to reinvent the wheel. Go ask them if it works and take a look at the costs of implementing.
That's exactly what we're working on.
I think we know some people over there.
I currently have two business owners down the street that take all of our fry oil and turn it into diesel fuel for their private vehicles, so it's a hundred percent.
Are they paying their portion of the village on motor fuel tax?
I'm guessing they're bypassing it.
I'm guessing so, too. We may have to-
Are we done with tab eight? Last call. We're gonna move on to tab nine.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
And it was late in the day, so I didn't have a chance to run this by Judy or Tim, but when we take a look at the replacement vehicles for the public health and safety, Ford Escape is available as a hybrid. I don't know what that would do to the bottom-line cost increase, but for local driving hybrids, actually do better gas mileage than they do on the highway, so it's the perfect application for like an inspector. I'm not sure if that would be a prohibitive increase to the cost, but if it was especially four bucks a gallon or whatever we're paying right now, it would be something I'd like to have looked at before our next meeting, if it's something that could be possible. And I, again, apologize for the late point. It jumped at me this afternoon when I was behind a Ford Escape hybrid. Like, hey, you know?
Like, hey, you know? But outside of that, that's the only question I have on the...
Commissioner, it is available in the hybrid to save the contract.
How much more is it?
Seven thousand dollars more.
Is it that much more? Because if it's like three grand, it'd pay itself for the gas in two years. If it's seven, and it's simple to put it together, say if gas is $3 and we drive it this many miles, we can put it together. If you can just give me the number, I'll throw it into a spreadsheet and calculate it out. Be happy to do it. But if it's too high, then it's not worth it, but it would be worth it.
What kind of fuels do those vehicles use?
Gasoline.
All gasoline.
Unleaded, but what happens is, it's slower miles, it works off of the battery that's built in, so the engine shuts off. What I don't understand with the hybrids is why aren't you replacing the starter every six months? Because the engine literally goes on and off throughout the time you're driving. My in-laws have a Prius, and it'll freak you out the first time you drive it, because you're sitting at a stop sign, and it's a golf cart when it starts. It comes off electric, and then the gas motor kicks in about 7 miles an hour. And they actually have a readout where it shows you on the screen, like a little, very distracting, but when you're on battery, when you're on gas, and when both motors are running. So, the thing gets up over 80 miles an hour. I had it on the highway, and both engines were making the gerbils run real fast. It's a really creative idea, and for local, that's where it is, is it recharges its battery off the generation of the tires turning, and then to overdo that when it comes low, the gas engines kick in. So, if we have somebody driving down an alley, it'd be electric most of the time.
My only two concerns about that is, I'd like to make sure that the hybrid version is still front-wheel drive, and that two of these vehicles can be parked outside because it's going to be outside.
Oh, yeah.
Does our mechanic know how to maintain it?
There is no maintenance. The batteries have a long period of time life, they actually, that's one of the problems on that. Back end is the disposal, they don't know what they'd do 10 years from now to get rid of the batteries, but it's a regular vehicle, you park it outside, it's not a plug-in, it's not a... No.
Commissioner, to that, and again, I don't know if we specifically need an SUV-style vehicle for this, but it may be worth our time to spend an hour or so researching the Chevy Volt. I don't know how many hours or how many miles per day are driven, but supposedly they get, supposedly they get, and I know you're shaking your head...
That's temperature-related, that's where his question comes from.
Is that going to be, would those be an issue? No, I was just, I was just throwing out an idea just to at least spend a few minutes looking into possibly getting the all-electric, but if there's, Commissioner Hostie was shaking his head, know that he apparently has already done his due diligence on this, that it's not a feasible alternative. Okay.
They said they couldn't get the car over 30 miles in cold weather.
Okay.
On the electric, and then the gas engine.
We do have, we tend to have cold weather up here, so that probably wouldn't work very well.
For $43,000, you want to get a little more than 30 miles driving time?
Right.
For plugging it in for eight hours.
Yeah.
But I don't think the all-electrics like the Leaf have gotten far enough. They said the same problem with the Leaf, which is an all-electric. The nice thing about the hybrid is after it goes from electric, it switches back to gasoline, so it's not dead. The Volt does that also, but it does it really quickly. It's on gas all the time, straight through.
Okay.
Bit of a geek, I've been looking at the stuff.
Are we done under tab nine? I know we heard about the items that are under tab 10 about possible revenue enhancements, but, you know, I think that most likely these will have some spirited conversation sometime within the next 30 days. You know, I'm going to be calling some additional meetings to be doing some strategic planning. I think it would be appropriate at that time that we talk about things that we can look to for the future, because frankly, a number of these, not all of them, but a number of the revenue enhancements could not take place this year, this budget year anyways. You know, vehicle licenses are already out the door.
Building permits could change mid-season.
Building permits could. The Van Buren parking lot could. Vehicle stickers cannot.
Water meters could, but it certainly is strategic.
Yeah. You know, unless you have an opinion, a strong opinion about wanting to, you know, definitely increase, you know, some fee right at the moment, but I think that, you know, it'd be better that we reserve that and have some, you know, genuine conversation.
I would concur.
Any other questions? Last call. We can go back through tab one through nine.
Again, for the totals, we're only up 3,150 from the original proposal.
Judy, can you do two things? Could you make, or have somebody make colored copies, because they should be able to do that downstairs, I think, of the PowerPoint presentation and sufficient copies for the elected officials? And then we'll make the appropriate adjustments for things that we discussed tonight, and then let's come back kind of with the final budget proposal with those adjustments, and then we'll come back together one more time just to say, "Here it is. Do you have any additional thoughts or concerns?"
Mr. Mayor, just, just because the camera was so far away from the screen, would it be possible to post those as eight and a half? Each slide is an eight and a half by 11 as part of a PDF online, so if people are watching this online, they could follow through on their computer screen? Would that be possible?
Yeah, we should be able to get it on there.
And, Your Honor, there was one other, Chris pointed out that there may be some questions that arise after you have a chance to review